So councillors, we'll get underway again. Commence the recommencement, the re of this annual plan council meeting. Now, I understand from Jenny that we go to page 75 in our decision sheets. First? 75. Is the council owned, is council owned company quite among them? And just, we have apologies from councillor Thompson this morning. Now, anything else on, nothing on page 75, so we move on to page 99.
93.
Page 93. Basically just going through those that we haven't.
95.
95, sorry. Just finance.
Thank you.
Anything on, anything on page 95?
Mr Moody?
Councillor Watson.
Yes, Mr Moody, just wondering, he suggested that he wants to pay for this over time. Is there any capacity to do that?
How do you mean, any capacity for him to do that?
Yes.
It's a targeted rate.
And you're happy, I can't, I just know, I'm sorry, I haven't reread your commentary at the Eastern.
That, that has been paid over time.
So that's already been agreed to?
That, that is.
Anything else on page 95? Over to 96. Still the finance. 97. And we have doubtless the remaining ones. On to up page 101, councillor.
Sorry, you wish it.
Councillor McTague.
Sorry, I, I, just Harry Love, which is on page 99. Sorry, I thought it was a financial thing, so I left it. But I just think the comments need to be revised. He, he specifically submitted on the viability of a targeted ticket price to be incorporated into stadium tickets. And I just think if I was him and I received that generic response, I'd probably feel like I did it, I had it been heard. So if it could be revised, that specific response revised, so that it refers to what he actually submitted on. Did you get that, Karen?
What, what number was that, Jonathan?
Um, 1 0 0 4 1, sorry, 1 0 0 4 2 1 on page 99, Harry Love.
Now, the next, um, page. 101. 102. 103.
This, this Smithons.
Yeah. No, just.
Yeah.
Is, is it, that's not on these pages. They asked for water connection, but that's the other issue of the.
Well, what, what were we talking about?
The Smithons, Wilsons and Duke's Road, they asked for a.
What number, what page is it?
I couldn't find it. I, I think it's underwater.
It's underwater and I asked to raise it underwater earlier and they said it's going to come under financial. Smithons, Wilsons, they, they, they had two issues. One was they wanted the Duke's Road property to be connected with water. The other one is the, um, issue of the rates that they've been charged because they had to sell a section. And I was, this.
We've got a piece underway, work underway to have a look at both of those.
Is there a possibility that we can deem or, we can't do it under rates of remission because we don't have the policy that, as far as I can tell, sends into the silver situation. But I was wondering whether we can deem their property to be rural for the purposes that they know worse often they would have been had they not sold the one section that they've sold. And that would take them back to where they were beforehand.
It would be good not to do it on the fly, like not to do it now. But, but I do have your email and I do, there is an anomaly here and there is an issue that needs to be addressed. And we've got a couple of pieces of work going at the moment to have a look at what we can do as quickly as we can because there's an issue we're aware of that. I just, I couldn't in good conscience say, yes, that's a good, that's the best solution today. I just, but, but I do understand there is a need to address it.
So we can take it that the, that the chief executive is picking up on responding to the submission.
Yeah, as long as there's two parts to it, yeah.
Can I just ask the question about the same piece of land and the lack of infrastructure that exists for that property to be used or the properties in and around there to be used for the purpose of industrial activity. So I'm not sure whether the chief or Mr Avery can give us any indication about where that's at, because that's a slightly different issue.
Yeah, that's been calculated at the moment as well. So all of that has come out, that's, that's all work underway at the moment, to come back to you.
Thank you.
100 and. 103. And 104, just.
Um, it's being a grant, so then we're, so it's a big security.
Which is current. Thank you, Rowan.
Um, so if we just, that was the term that comes to be commended grant, so it's page 85.
Page 85.
So. So if we split, split it round.
So these are, these are those that excluding.
Yes, and then it's page 93.
So we'll come back to any specific requests for grants after all this. So we deal with the ones that, that don't involve grants. 85, 86.
86, I'm not quite sure if this is the right place, but Paul Smith, part of his submission was about this banner that has always been hung and actually adds life and some interest to the sitting. And we don't seem to have secured it or we've lost, I'm not quite sure what the story was with that. But are we looking at replacing that banner site?
It's, it's more marketing communications, govern those sites. But I understand the issue is we lost the rights for the one on Lois Stewart and the ones on George are too dangerous. So the last one we had up there was subject to a whole lot of print and it's just not safe to keep it there. So I'm not sure what progress Marketing Communications have made on securing a new site.
Well, if we fear that they may be slightly busy doing governance issues for the next week, why can't I ask that we get a report to Planning and Regulatory about all community, I'm not quite sure which one it would go to, that start before, before the end of July as to alternate sites that are being progressed. Because that, that skips it on the, um, yeah, so that's not.
I think, oh, I've, my, I've seen a rating and maybe decided that probably we don't need a report. So are we, are we going forward now?
I don't, I said start before, I didn't mean I wanted a report. I just want them to report, let us know what I said.
87. And we're over to 81 to the final.
That's all ground.
Oh, that's all ground.
Did you say 87?
Um, well, yes, I did, if it's not a ground.
Well, the Minister, Keaton and Even Beautiful talked about applying to the Ministry of Justice and I'm not quite sure, again, this doesn't necessarily have to have a resolution here. But are we looking at partnering with the Ministry of Justice for funds?
Previously, the City Safety Officer has secured funding through Ministry of Justice for graffiti control. And I, my understanding is that we still receive, Castle Street specifically receives $10,000 through that grant from the City Safety Officer. I don't know, I'm not sure if that's continuing or not. I haven't had a discussion recently, but.
Well, it seems a really good opportunity, I hope we are.
Um, excuse me, May, can I just note a correction? There's a correction on page 86, the comments about to the Dunedin Collaboration Against Family Violence that noted that staff had met with this organisation, we haven't. So we have, we have noted that that scenario and we will be correcting that in the letter that goes out.
Thank you.
But you are the. Yeah.
And 87. There you go. You wrote 95.
Yes, it's 97.
93, I think is the next one that isn't a grant. Councillor McTague.
Um, Paul Smith, the Midwinter Celebrations crew raised the issue again of the community gallery and booking systems for that. Um, I think your response basically says that that piece of work is part until.
Yeah.
Capacity exists. Do we have any idea of how long that might be?
Um, it won't be until the art and culture strategies ticked off.
Right. Thank you.
Well, nice to see that.
94. And 95. Councillor McTague.
Sorry, just the, the one about Brockville Community Support Trust,
page.
Uh, which is 93. In terms of the feasibility study that they are putting together on their community pub.
Yeah.
Are we working with them on that liaison with them?
Yes, we are.
So they do have a single contact.
Yep, full office, plus they have the bonus of Michael living in there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So they didn't actually ask for some funds?
They suggested in one of their submissions, because there were two similar submissions and there was a suggestion around funding for the community worker and in my response I've directed them to the community grants process, which is where those sorts of requests are normally considered.
But we can't, so I, I haven't, I'm sorry, read my folders for community grants, which is later this way.
I don't know if they've applied or not. And we can't deem this to be an application under that.
But we could have mentioned in the response that there is a single point of contact and we look forward to engaging them through, yeah.
Councillor Vans.
95 and the responses and the staff comments responses to mainly the debt issue. It says that it's been council policy for a number of years to look at reducing debt across the group. And this is starting to have an impact with debt levels starting to decrease. Council, and I believe your worship, made public announcements in 2012 that debt had peaked and was decreasing. Certainly those claims were made in 2013 before the election, that debt had peaked and was decreasing. And now we say in 2014 that it's starting to have an impact, that levels are starting to decrease. All of these annual statements can't be true. Which is it?
Well, I think that the ones that you reported, as others are saying, have probably misrepresented in most cases when we're talking about the coming year, where it was going to peak. So I think, I, I, I have no reason to believe that there's anything wrong. Nicola, did you want it?
I'm afraid that's outside our, our area, we need grant. Comment on that.
Well, we've done coverage.
Could we just say something slightly different? Like we're hoping that we've about got to the limit of our borrowing or some, something that more nearly aligns with.
Um, we could not say that because we, because that wouldn't be true. Um, I mean, and strictly speaking, whether we could say that we've got to the limit of our borrowing when in fact, you know, there's calls on capitals that could be made, for example. So, um, can you tell me which one exactly you're referring to, Councillor Vans? What page are you on?
David B, 95. I'm not saying that what's written here isn't true, it may be. What I'm saying is that if it is, then what we've been saying the last few years definitely isn't.
Well, we're not here to litigate what was being said before, we're here to talk about what's here.
Oh, well, you may not be here to litigate what's been said before, me and Cal, I am.
Well, then you presumably don't understand the purpose of this meeting. The meeting is to decide the annual plan for the coming year, not to re-litigate past election comparisons.
I believe that in the wider scope of the meeting, your worship, is to actually have some credibility about what goes into our responses to submissions. And I'm concerned that the credibility, as expressed on page 95, has been compromised by what's gone before.
Well, I disagree. Councillor McTague.
Just, um, two issues which I think Rubika circulated responses to, which aren't in our decision sheets. The first was Abbey Field and the second was Keaton and Even Beautiful's graffiti issue. And I forget what the third one is because I wrote on the back of it and gave it to the Governance Board Officers. But in terms of the, um, the response on graffiti, Rubika, I wasn't quite sure when you say KDB is more than happy to be the lead agency and assured you request it.
So that was their submission, so Keaton and Even Beautiful has offered that.
Oh, so that's a response to us.
And they're suggesting that to do so would require additional staff, additional hours with the coordinating.
Yeah.
Councillor McCall.
Thank you, Worship. On page 95, Amy Benions, 1 0 0 7 8 6. I can't recall the submission individually, so I don't know if it was relevant. But I did wonder whether it might be worth making mention of the nascent youth participation advisory group and the work that makes a lot of, come out of that.
Suggestion taken, we've got that. Okay.
So that's all the grants.
Through to, that's all that one, so that's.
That's the end of the decision sheet, other than the grants.
Okay, so councillors, let's, we move on to the grants. They've been circulated on the segment list. Do you have some, do you have some more copies?
Yeah, so you're about to do grants.
Use of the next page. Right. Jane, would you like to just take, or Jane and Nicola, would you just like to take us through what each of these, just so we're all quite clear about the different lists.
Um, the front page, this is the G O S O, which is coming in late.
Right, this is on the small print, yep.
Then the next page was funding request that had been not supplied or, um, not, this, the funding request was out of use. The final page, the civic grants.
Sorry.
The final page of the civic grants is looking forward to that.
And the middle, the middle one?
The middle one was just request for funding that was out of use or not, it was funded out. We've dealt with all my support and checks.
We've dealt with much of the ones in the middle. So the status of these, the ones on the first page, the status of them is that none of them is funded at the moment in the draft.
Uh, we can't fund it, sorry. We've got 22,002. Sorry, I'm on my way, I should have. I, I thought, we're looking at civic grants, we're just looking at the nature and I'll come back to it and tell you where what was coming.
Because the, the way I was going to address this, so that the civic grants applications on the third page, none of these is currently, is that, what's the status of those? None of them is currently funded?
I, I can, so if we look at the third, the sheet, you have the draft budget, 1415 draft budget tells you how much money is currently in the budget for certain organisations. The next column, requested column, is how much they have asked for. And then the increase to budget column is how much the budget would need to increase to fulfil their request.
What I'm concerned that we all are on the same page on is which requests are currently not funded, so we can. Didn't touch it, yeah, it's got there, so we all understand that that's.
Your Worship, sorry, I'm just wondering whether it would be possible to get a briefing as to how much money we have available under the 3% because I can see us having a bit of a discussion in a vacuum.
And perhaps maybe resulting in discussions with the ORC would help as well. I think some of us read it, but I've read, put it, we knew formally, about 300,000?
Councillors, we'll take in a journey of five minutes to give the staff time to get an overview.
I probably didn't notice.
Lee, did you get a copy of this that you need?
Um, yes. This is the front.
It's the true page.
No, 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 no.
Okay, we have, perhaps you could just take us through, um, Grant or Andrew Nicola, what the, what's on the screen?
I'd love to say I could refer to Nicola, but apparently I can't. So, the thing we've got there is that, um, we've got something that's just changed.
Sorry?
What we did have.
Okay, sorry, I've got a minute now, I'm confused now.
It, it's the one that Jane has said, yeah. So, what that's got is that it's shown here that the savings report we presented, I was going to say earlier in the week, but mid-last week, showed twenty-three thousand dollars for the savings. On top of that, we've got some carried forwards further down, four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred. Um, and then we've got the hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars available from the draft, or remained from that original annual plan. So that means in total, we've got six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred dollars available of additional spending. If we just scroll down a little bit, you'll see, oh, that's six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Do you have a question, councillor Van Dusen?
We have got, uh, what's been approved so far is there's been additional twenty thousand dollars for the environment strategy, ninety-five thousand dollars for the St. Mary's Sewell work, and then two and a half thousand dollars for the St. Paul Cathedral CCTV link.
What's been built?
Sorry?
I edged in that it was necessary new money, I thought that was within the build.
No, that was additional funding.
The toilets plus two and a half.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So, if you just scroll down slightly further, that then gives us a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand additional expenditure, which gives us a running total of just under five point, five hundred and fifty thousand, five or so.
Where does the buses go then?
Well, they don't at the moment, because we haven't allocated any funding.
Can we just walk through this in a, only one? Councillor Van Dusen, question.
Um, yes, you've said that we now have a total of five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred available.
Yes.
It's.
That, that's if we maintain the three percent rate.
Ah, so it's not actually cash available at all, it's, it's, it's available if we are prepared to put the rates up three percent. In fact, we have known available, in fact, we're, we're going further into the bit. It's not actually available at all, is it?
Well, it depends if you've decided to have a three percent rate increase.
So, on the pred, all this is predicated on, we're increasing rates three percent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and I've thought out too, that one of the other alternatives, and this was the case at the draft and the planning stage, where the amount available, the comparable amount available was a hundred and seventy-nine, was that one of the alternatives was just to retire it. So, it's, or, as you say, quite rightly, or not raise the rates by three percent. So, councillor Wilson.
Just at the top of that, you've had the three percent rise excluding, um, if you go to the top, I understand the warm homes, cozy homes, oh, sorry, eco housing, but I don't understand the heritage coming out of that rates increase. Which part of the rates increase isn't included in that three percent? Presuming that's part of the option three.
I, I, I don't know.
What it means is that the three percent rates rise, people who are paying in addition to that in order to repay their, either their heritage or their targeted rate is over and above the three percent.
Just, just part of that heritage.
To those individual households that they sign up to, that's right.
Okay, it's not all of option three, no, I just want to make sure that, yeah.
So, what I propose to do is, is exhaust any further questions to, so that we all understand we're on the same page here. And then, um, then I might hand to the chief to tell us about the outcomes of the discussions with ORC with regard to the public transport governance expenditure proposed, and that will give us, then we'll, then we'll know what we've got. So, did councillor McTavish give a question? Right, okay. Any further questions about us in front of us? Okay, chief.
Um, so at the meeting with the Otigo Regional Council last week, they're reasonably clear that the retained public transport fund, that this isn't, that it's used for operational purposes rather than governance purposes, and that this isn't the way that they would expend the fund. However, they have contributed, they've said that they're willing to put in, uh, in-kind support, so a fair amount of the budget that we had, or a chunk of the budget that we had, was for staffing and expertise. They've said that they will contribute to that, um, to the value of around about a hundred thousand odd dollars, that's, they've done their sums and they think that would be, um, a reasonable, uh, contribution of their personnel and time and expertise. Um, we've tightened the budget as much as we think we can, but we also think, uh, that we will, well, we've had some discussions with NZTA and we'll continue to have discussions with NZTA about a contribution to this. So we think if you put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this work, uh, we will, we will have the budget covered and if NZTA make a contribution, then we will not potentially need to spend it all.
So then, do I take the effect of that as if we, that we, if we are committed to continuing the proposal, then we need to take a hundred and fifty thousand off that, six hundred and sixty-four? Councillor Van Dusen.
Um, I read the, as we all do, I guess, the report of the decision or the comment about this fund. Um, are, are you confident that, sorry, that the, um, the nature of the fund and its constitution, in that context, that this is a, is a robust decision or one that cannot be challenged? So I'm just asking, I mean, let me ask it differently. This is a fund collected by the ORC from those in areas available to access public transport in the city. And, and what rules, I mean, I'm interested in the interpretation on the basis of what any constitution or raison d'etre there is for the fund, because I don't see a lot of difference in the discussion, in the context of what's going on now, between operational funds providing buses on the road and a discussion about who's going to manage that and what sort of service is going to be available. I think that's, um, a pretty arcane difference, uh, and I wondered if there's, in your view, any possibility of teasing that out a little further?
Um, we were, we were, I mean, it was a good discussion with the regional council's senior staff. We were persuaded by, um, their decision that their costs in this matter would not be met out of the fund, that they will be meeting their costs in this matter from elsewhere because they, if they were planning to meet their own costs out of this fund but wouldn't have met ours, then we would think perhaps there was an issue of what the rules might be. But we were persuaded that they didn't feel that they were, that the way they have collected and used the fund, that this, that, that they wouldn't be using it to pay for their share either.
Uh, another question please, mister, mister mayor. Um, in the, um, event, as yet uncertain, that we were to proceed with and the ORC were to agree to, uh, a handover of the responsibility, what would happen to the fund, the existing fund there in their bank now?
The remainder of that fund, which at this point in time is predicted to be approximately one point one million dollars, will transfer to Dunedin City Council again as a ring-fenced fund for Dunedin public transport operations.
For Dunedin, so when you say it's ring-fenced for that purpose, at that point, were we the operator, the administrator, we'd be able to decide what Dunedin public transport purposes actually were, provided they've.
Provided it was within the, within the rules that had been set when that money was, uh, was taken, was levied.
Was transferred or was originally rated?
I would imagine was originally rated.
That's really my original question, what were those rules? Because it's all very well for a decision to be made, plucked out of the ether, that we're not going to, oh, I say, we're not going to spend any of this fund, but we're not going to give any, any to you either, to defray the pretty substantial costs of investigating a possible transfer. I have to say, I find that odd.
We will continue to have these discussions with the ORC as this week goes through as to who should rightly pay for what. Um, this was the outcome of the discussion on Friday, which is their assessment was that that wouldn't be an appropriate use of the fund.
Thank you. Councillor.
All right, councillor, Bates and Piper's asked my question and the chief starts in it.
Thank you, councillor McTavish.
Sue, I appreciate that you've tightened the budgets and, um, and I appreciate that ORC is off of what they have. Are you sure though that a hundred and fifty is going to be sufficient? Because I would hate for us to be doing a poor or, um, less than top quality piece of work around this, simply because we don't have the resourcing budget for that purpose.
Uh, so Jean's gone away and done some interrogations of the budget. Um, uh, the hundred and fifty is in anticipation of getting some, uh, contribution from the NZTA, um, and in the absence of that, um, making some decisions about reallocation within the transport portfolio. So, yes, like you, this is not, uh, saving money by not doing appropriate due diligence on public transport would be a very short-term strategy.
So in that case, um, would we be better off to allocate more and you to accrue that as a potential saving, should it not be required? Or are you confident that one hundred and fifty would be enough?
Um, I'm happy to take Jean's, we did a hundred and fifty as enough and that he can reallocate within the transport portfolio. So, Jean's acting the way that we've tried to do with all general managers and, and I'd have to say are doing much more consistently across council than we used to where this was a little hit and miss. That all general managers first and foremost look to see whether they can reallocate and tweak within their existing funding levels rather than just that when they want to do something new.
Councillor Van Dusen.
Does Jean also have the option, as I suspect he does, of, uh, reducing some capital expenditure and putting it into operational or whatever in order to meet any shortfall? I believe that some, uh, ability for, um, top managers is available for that.
I, if it transpires that NZTA don't contribute and if it transpires that the hundred and fifty is not enough to get the expertise and the staffing required to do the work, then I would expect Jean to come back to the senior leadership team with some proposals for how to fund the football.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, we've, we've given, we've, we now have identified what, um, will be required in terms of funding for this purpose. Now, I can't recall the exact wording of the motion, but are, do, are we, is it necessary now to move that a hundred and fifty thousand be allocated to, um, public transport governance investigations? Something happened to that, councillor McTavish, second councillor Wilson, that a hundred and, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars be, uh, allocated to public transport governance, governance investigations as per the original motion, previous motion. Who's to speak to it, councillor McTavish? Councillor Wilson? Any others speak, councillor Van Dusen?
This hundred and fifty investigation, I believe, is premature. I do believe that the role of, uh, running Dunedin's bus service does correctly sit with city council and I hope that one day we'll be in a position to be able to do that and do it properly. However, this hundred and fifty thousand is a very thin, uh, beginning of a wedge, which I believe will be anything from five to ten million dollars if we are to actually take on the buses and do it properly. And I don't believe that we should take on the buses and do it properly, because I haven't heard any arguments as to why we would do that now. We're in a position now, we've been extremely tight on finance, we're in a position now where there are substantial.
Councillor Van Dusen, can I just point out that you, you're actually relitigating the previous motion, that's already been passed, what we're talking about here is just the money.
Yes.
So can you please restrict yourself to the money and not the previous issues around, around whether we take over the governance?
Yeah, my reason for voting against even this lesser amount of money, a hundred and fifty rather than three hundred, is that, uh, we don't have the money. And because if we were to spend this hundred and fifty, uh, any, uh, positive result from it spending would result in many, many millions being required to do properly a job that is, uh, already beginning to be done by the ORC and sticking to the money as the mayor has requested. Uh, we are looking at a situation where if you look at Dunedin overall and not just our budget, we'd be looking at an enormous amount of stranded costs. Uh, we are looking at a whole lot of implications that come directly from the spending of this hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The stranded costs, the need, uh, for a hub, uh, all these additional costs that are going to come from it, uh, to me, speak against doing it at this time, although I recognise that it does need to be done at some point, just to, now would not be it.
Thank you, councillor McCamber.
Just because we're not sort of seeing it up there and my memory's not good enough, when you said investigative work, does that include consultation? Or, how far was, where were we going with our three hundred?
Uh, now that was to do the investigation work, to report back to the council, so that's the due diligence process, report back if we make a decision whether you want to go out on consultation with the proposal.
Councillor McTavish.
Well, just a question around that, um, sorry, that wasn't my understanding on the basis of the notes that we had in our documents the other day, that included consultation work.
Actually, I think, sorry, I think it did include a portion of east, two to five, because it did deal with it.
The pre-LTP consultation.
Sorry.
So, consultation's in?
Yes, it is. The, the pre-LTP consultation is in.
Who's the speaker, councillor Wilson?
Look, I, um, I'm only speaking because to answer some of the criticism of councillor Van Dusen and try and persuade him otherwise, um, fortunately. Um, this isn't premature, in order to do this, um, at the least cost, it's important to do it in an LTP year, um, and to get the synergies of communication and consultation. So if we don't do it now, then it actually could be three years before we could consider it. Um, the DCC is under financial restraint, I appreciate that, but so are a lot of people in Dunedin, and the cheapest form of transport may well be public transport if we do it right. Um, in order to make savings for all of our ratepayers, I think we need to consider the best of everyone, not just ourselves as a council. Um, I am going to support this with the concern that some people discussing this previously may be thinking this would be a city-wide rate. Um, and my biggest concern for this whole project is we're not in the place to do a targeted rate by area. Um, and as a rural ratepower, that causes me a great amount of concern. But I think for the betterment of most ratepayers in Dunedin and because I am, as I argued earlier, concerned that everyone round this table should be considering this is for the betterment of Dunedin unlike what the ORC can do, um, I'm going to be supporting it. I think it's a piece of work that can make Dunedin really work brilliantly as a city in planning-wise and infrastructure-wise, and I really urge everyone to at least explore this to see if it takes the boxes that we think it might.
Can we have it up, please?
The motion. Yes, put it up. Councillor Bates and Piper.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm, I'm reluctant to support, um, this a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, less reluctant though.
Yeah, just let me come in previous motion to get it right. Can you just find it?
Councillor.
Less reluctant though than I would be to support three hundred thousand, especially when, as, as we've discussed earlier, there's over a million sitting in a fund that's been rated on Dunedin residents by the regional council for public transport in Dunedin, that they've decided is not available for this sort of work. However, I do believe that we need to consider the proposal, and I guess if you're, um, making, making councillor Thompson's decision about tofu and tripe, then, um, this is half, this is the distasteful option at half price. this is the distasteful option at half price. Pity, pity's not here.
We gave them some chocolate to go home.
Further speakers, um, and just to clarify, um, you can't find previous one. This is a simple motion.
Yeah.
So end, end consultation after all, do you please, Dave?
Councillor Benson.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I'm just, just, I guess there's a question for the chief actually. Um, we, we've had a report on a business case from CAGNY and, um, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, whether there's going to be any further investigation that would double up on that already, that big, big report that we had from CAGNY about public transport. Was it public transport?
Yes, we, we saw that, that CAGNY report hours and we got it done as the first step of the public transport investigation. So the next tranche of work builds on that, we're certainly not planning to redo any of it.
No, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, like councillor Benson Pope, a bit concerned that, um, that the ORC couldn't see, uh, its way to, to help us, uh, with, apart from staff inputs. Um, I, I, I feel that, you know, that, um, there is a, there is obviously a place for, for us to be governing, uh, the, the, uh, public transport system in Dunedin. And, um, uh, although I'll support this for some of the reasons that, um, that councillor Wilson was saying. Um, that we, we, there is a lot of public support for this and, um, so, um, yeah, I'll be supporting it.
Okay, just for clarity, we're picking up on councillor Calvin's request to have that motion up there. Clearly we need to work out how to align it with the previous motion, so.
I'll just print it down and we'll have it plaid here.
The trike, so, so it may be re, um, attributed as, uh, um, re, confirm with the previous motion with the number of.
The motion is going to see C, go to the C. So later.
Do you wish to speak, councillor?
Um, I think most of what I was going to say has been C worship, but I, um, I guess there are two things that I would highlight. The first is that, um, I think if we don't do this, as councillor Wilson said, there is a, um, a time component and an opportunity cost to not doing it now. In the sense that, um, not only are there synergies with our own LTP, but there are also synergies with some of the planning processes that the public transport, whoever's managing the public transport currently has to be going through in terms of planning, um, and NZTA, um, framework. So if we're not doing this now in conjunction with the ORC, I think, um, there is a real opportunity cost in, in, in terms of what we would be missing out on. Um, so I, I, I think that, that point is well made. Um, the second point that I think is important to, to bear in mind is that, yep, it's not ideal that we, we're having to put, um, finances into this. But I, I, I think the ORC has come to the table with, um, a hundred K in kind and that's, um, it's not quite meeting us halfway, but it's, it's, um, it's getting there. And if NZTA also chip in, then it could well be that we're, um, we're actually a minority contributing partner to this work. So, um, I think we should bear that in mind.
Councillor Van.
Still like to know what I'm talking to, but, um.
What was?
Gentlemen.
Um, well, I.
I don't think until we've got it up there, we can possibly get a.
Well, but there's two things, that could well be the right requirement of this stat, but you, this is, this, this could be the second time you spoke to councillor Calvin, because you spoke, you've got a second speaker. Um, but we, we, we'll get it up and then we will decide whether it requires further discussion. I mean, it's, it, this is, we're, we're dealing with semantics here, it's pretty clear what the motion's about. Simply saying that we're gonna allocate a hundred and fifty thousand to what we've already decided to do. Um, so councillor, um, so has anyone got any questions about the, the resolution?
I thought I was asking a question and I said that it includes something else apart from investigations. And I was told, yes, it does, and that doesn't.
So is that a question?
Well, I thought it was a question earlier and I thought the answer, my question was that, that money we're allocating included some consultations up to the LTP. And now the thing we've got up here doesn't include that. So this is a lesser job than what we were going to do with the three hundred thousand, it is a question.
And I'm happy to answer it. So the list that Jean sent around said, here is the sum total of, uh, work that includes consultation for which we will need three hundred thousand dollars. And that's the amount that was referred to in the original motion. We now think with the contributing partner slash partners, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete that same work. So, but we can add the words including consultation if you would like at the end of the resolution, if that gives you comfort and I'm happy to do that.
Well, if, if the number and.
Yes, I'm happy with that.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. The, the, the only thing that I would flag is whether or not we need to be noting the ORC's one hundred thousand dollar in-kind contribution as part of this motion or not.
I don't think that the council can pass a motion about what some other party has agreed to outside of this forum, but.
It would be noting only, but that's fine.
Okay, so you are having it include, so could you add in, uh, Jenny, the public transport governance investigations including consultation? That does clarify. Okay, is everyone clear about what the motion is? I'm, I'm gonna put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
I guess.
No, record it please.
All right, so by my reckoning, um, given, given the table that, um, ran across a while ago, we, uh, the available, uh, funding that would keep us below three percent in price is now five hundred and fourteen thousand.
Three hundred and ninety-six, yeah.
Five hundred and seventy.
Can you roll down please, Jean?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Can you roll down each one then?
And can you please add dark, dark please? And can you please add a hundred and fifty in lines thirty-one? If you look on the screen at line thirty-one, Jean.
Yeah, I drew it over, I can't, sorry, give me two seconds.
Okay, oh, I see, you don't even want to write like this.
No. It's really hard working up here. So we might do it nine thirty-one.
One hundred and fifty thousand, please.
So once we've established what, what is the available quantum, I'd like to work through the, um, grant requests to dis- determine council's, um, inclination to grant them or not. Each one. And I think that we should probably start with the. Uh, so it's a status is that approved, so. Has that been taken into account in these figures, Jane?
Sorry, Jane, did you say it had been parked? Sixty-five.
All right, um, so the running total, as I understand it now, is, is that the figure of the volume? Three hundred and ninety-six, three hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred. So councillors, can we work through, um, this, um, sheet, the top sheet? And identify the status of each of the, um, funding requests as we go through. Um, the first one is public transport governance, we've dealt with that. The second one is, um, environmental strategy resourcing, we've had dealt with that, that's twenty thousand. Civic centre lighting upgrade, now just can, we, we've, we parked it, so what is the, what do we need to do? Jane, you, you mentioned.
Page, it's page eleven point three of our first reports.
The, in the councillor Jane. So it's, um, right, so this is at the, um, item eleven in our, um, agenda. So if we confirm that, that figure would go up, that sixty-five thousand figure on this sheet would go up to a hundred and forty-four, is that?
We don't know.
No. So what would be?
There's, there's a hundred and sixty thousand carried forward on this year.
But we need another sixty-five.
And the report had requested an addition of sixty-five to do the civic centre lighting upgrade.
Okay, so the question is, do we spend an extra sixty-five to bring it up to that? I'm interested in, I'll take it, no, councillor, councillor Lord.
Well, I haven't got a motion, but my question is, why do we not just spend the hundred and sixty-five and leave the sixty-five? I mean, surely you still get a benefit of the lights that you do upgrade? And there's no disadvantage by having some undone, is there? You have to do the whole thing at once.
Well, that's, that's a very good question, so I don't know.
Get greater.
Perhaps councillor Van Der Wiss, you could eliminate this subject.
The, there, there's, there's two arguments here. One of them is that you spend all the money and do the whole lot at one time and you do get a better price on your lighting because of your bulk buying. Right, so there's that argument, say, we should do the whole lot. The other positive of, well, it's called option A, where we spend it all upfront, is that not only do you get a better price on your lights, but you start getting your significant electricity savings from day one. And you get savings in terms of damage to your electrical fittings because of the much less heat that's produced by LEDs. So there's three wins available, there's, there's the bulk buying, there's the electricity saving, and there's the much less maintenance that you're, that you're going to get. But it requires the lump upfront, which is, you know, wh- why we, 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 uh, have to consider, um, as an investor save. The other option is to simply replace fittings as required. Like when a fitting fails, you don't put another one of the old-fashioned fluoro tubes in there, you've put a new T eight LED unit. You're gonna pay more for the unit, um, you're only gonna get savings on that particular unit. Uh, and it may be two, three years before you've actually got round to replacing all of them. I believe there's a roughly a four-year turnover cycle for most of the lighting in the civic centre. So, uh, you will, i- if, if you just look at year one and year two, it'll be cheaper to just, uh, um, s- do them as they come up. But if you want to look at, uh, four years ahead, investor save, you're already making significant gains if you do the whole lot upfront. And if you look at five years, six years, ten years, those gains become much more significant as time goes on. So it's the old story of spend it now and you will get guaranteed significant savings.
Yeah, only other question I have in response to that is, a month ago, you were suggesting that if we didn't, uh, if we delayed this pro- whole project for a year, we would get significant, significant better, uh, savings the way the cost of LEDs are dropping. So the question is probably a, a.
Right, that, that's a slightly different situation. We, we were talking then, I believe, about, uh, LED street lighting. Um, LED street lighting has lagged behind in terms of its, uh, acceptance, has lagged behind the kind of lighting that would go into the civic centre. Uh, the kind of lighting that goes into the civic centre is all retrofit, you don't, you don't need new fittings. Um, and it's already widely, uh, used in a lot of countries, which means the price of those LEDs, the kind of the civic centre, has already come down a lot. Street lighting requires totally new fittings, it requires, uh, different kinds of technology. And, uh, your, your, your upfront costs are actually significantly higher because you can't retrofit. And I believe that the, uh, street lighting LED issue is one that we should grab the chain on. Because those costs will come down, uh, as, um, you know, uh, uh, people, uh, or other cities get into them later, sorry.
Well, that's, that's good, thanks for that.
Uh, we just, uh, called Maria and, and Belova, and this is the, uh, the civic centre lighting upgrade. Um, it's my understanding of some of the cost, it's in terms of replacing the existing fluorescent lights with the new ones. But my understanding, the other part of it was also around motion detectors in some of the rooms and other systems that also turned lights off when people went there, which I'm assuming is more complicated in terms of. The question is, could we get away with only spending one hundred and sixty thousand, not carry forward the sixty-five and do part of the job? The civic centre.
The quick, the, yeah, the question, um, and councillor Van Der Wiss has already, um, given some, some light on it.
Oh, I didn't get the weight.
Uh, uh, question to councillor Lord was, could we just spend part of it and not get, not spend the extra sixty-five thousand? What would be proportionally the gain if we just spent what we've already had, a hundred and forty?
I mean, I think we could, we could ask that in a, in a tender, I don't know how complicated it would be to just do bits of the building. I think there might be economies of scale that we'd lose, I'm not sure. Um, in terms of like anything more glamorous than just replacing the fittings, I don't, that's not really on the cards at the moment. Because we looked at some of those options for like, you know, control systems and they were just way out of our budget.
Okay, um, now I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take questions at the moment, so councillor Lord, you had your hand up.
If we went for a total, uh, upgrade, what would we do with the old lighting? And is there ability to use it within the DCC organisations or pass it on to non-profits or something like that?
We hadn't planned for that, we just, we were factoring in disposing of the old lighting, but not passing it on.
So even if you had put a series of new fluorescent tubes in it, you know, three months ago, you would just take those and consider just disposing of them?
Probably, yeah, because, yeah.
Councillor St.
My maths is just a little bit, a little bit flaky, but if I look at a total investment of four hundred and forty, which is the cost of the project as it was originally funded, plus the sixty-five, so that, that total cost to do the whole civic building and library is four hundred and forty thousand. If I take that at an interest rate of seven point three percent, which is the current average rate that we've been using. Um, then if I, if I take that out, there's about thirty-two thousand dollars basically in interest. So that's the interest cost on that investment. The return on top of that is another about twenty-nine and a half thousand. So it actually is an invest to save, it, it returns probably, um, almost a hundred percent more than the interest rate. So my personal view is for the sixty-five thousand additional, we're getting a pretty good return and we should approve it.
Come back to that, you might wanna formulate a motion. Councillor Van Der Wiss.
Um, are, are you familiar, uh, it's been suggested that no consideration of extra facilities such as motion sensors has been looked at. But are, are you aware that a number of these, uh, long fluorescent fittings, you can buy in an LED, uh, um, format now? I'm, I'm not trying to, uh, say that you're easily led, but, but some of these fittings actually have a motion sensor built into them. And that they are very cost-effective, you don't actually have to put motion sensors in the room. You can simply retrofit your fluoro tube and get a new LED tube that also has a motion sensor in it. So it switches off when there's no one in the room automatically, uh, even further, uh, increasing the kind of return that councillor Staines has already, um, indicated.
Yeah, it's, it's not that we didn't consider the sort of bigger building management system, that was in our tender. Um, the proposals that we got didn't suggest anything like what you're talking about. Um, and we didn't, we weren't able to afford the. Um, and we didn't, we weren't able to afford the sort of bigger building management system.
Sure.
So we did consider it, but we just didn't get any proposals that pointed to either your solution or us being able to afford the more standard.
Right, so you weren't aware that in fact you can get retrofit bulbs that actually have built in sensors?
That was not one of the solutions that came forward.
Okay.
And I think we wa- we wrote a pretty broad tender, we weren't, we didn't write a prescriptive tender, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
I was actually going to happily move my motion, but the, the question I have here is, I think there's a big part to, um, understand the stuff behind this, and I'm, I'm just wondering, have you considered as well as doing this, which I fully support, is having an analysis done of it, maybe using the University of Etage students to do sort of review of it? Because I think that's where the learnings, the, much bigger than just actually doing this job, is the whole of learnings that can come out of it.
A, a review?
Oh, not a review, but I mean, having a, a project sitting alongside this, analysing it for how effective it actually is. Um, and, and trying to capture the, okay, the savings.
We could, we could look at that.
Because I'd be really keen to see.
The ECA suppliers have to guarantee the savings that they'll, that we'll see, and they have to review to see whether it's actually being realised.
Mm-hmm.
So that side of it is, is covered, but I see what you're saying about trying to broaden the sort of reach of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Out of way there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councillor Cowan.
We worship, this is a question, just so as you know, that question was different from me making a statement. Um, the question I have is, I understood that this was set from a library project, which is a completely other thing. So invest to save wise, do we know whether if we spent the money we've currently got left over to carry forward, how much we would save by spending that compared with how much we would save if we spent an extra sixty five thousand dollars? And did the whole thing, the whole civic centre? Because that's the saving we're talking about making if we spend the extra sixty five now.
Yeah, no, I, we don't know that, I, I wouldn't know like for what we've got left, how much of the civic centre we might be able to do, what the companies might charge us if we're not doing the whole building, that would, I wouldn't have that information.
So we have no real understanding of the savings we would make either by spending the carry forward sort of money or by spending X plus sixty five thousand.
We have fifty six thousand. We can talk to the savings that we would make were we to do the whole building, but we can't talk to the savings that we would.
Just the civic centre. The civic centre's part of it, because that's what we're discussing, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Not the rest of it, which we've already, so.
With the money that we've got left, I can talk about it like that, we, I don't know how much of the building we'd be able to do, and I don't know what the payback period might be for that, because I think it might change what kind of proposals we've got in from the companies. So it's, it would be hard for me to answer that.
Right, can, are there any other questions? Right, the, the motion was answered a second of that, councillor Wilson. Councillor Staines, do you wish to speak to that?
Yes, I've just had a bit more play with the maths, and I can confirm that the, there is a significant return on the investment above, uh, retiring it. So the original, um, resolutions, which established this a year ago, uh, were correct, and I think it would be unfortunate not to compliment the word, uh, and have, uh, taken benefit of all of those savings. So even with the additional budget request, it is still a very good investment.
Thank yous. Councillor next.
I agree with councillor Staines that we are going to, um, get, um, savings from this, it's a genuine invest to save, and that as time goes on, those savings actually increase, uh, mainly because of the extended life, you're, you know, fifty thousand hours for your LED fittings these days, and because of the, uh, much less maintenance, the fact you don't have to get people up ladders changing these things all the time, and you don't get the heat degradation of the fittings, which is, uh, an even more expensive issue with the current lighting system that we have. Um, the one reservation I do have, and it's the only one on this, is that it seems that at the moment, because we don't have an energy manager, and we don't have any, any, any internal expertise on, uh, lighting systems and energy saving, that we would be at the hands of essentially, um, buying through ECA or some other, um, uh, local government out there up north. And, um, I'm not convinced that, uh, we would get anything like the kind of deal, uh, through them that we could get, simply buying direct off manufacturers in China. All of the LEDs these days that you'll see are made in China these days, providing you're getting them from a, a big enough, uh, company. I think there is no real issue with the quality anymore, they're all, um, manufactured in enormous quantities, um, and it's all entirely automated. Um, so the question really now for me is, uh, can we somehow hopefully organise some staff expertise, uh, to, uh, in the absence of, uh, Mr. Rotten, who, who used to have that expertise, um, to ensure that we actually get a reasonable price on buying the LED fittings? My concern is that if we go through ECA, even if they give some kind of subsidy, it may end up a wee bit like the ECA intuitions this situation, where in fact you don't really get a saving, you, you know, what savings do you get from your ECA grant, you, you pay for a more expensive installation? So that would be my only reservation, I'll be voting for this either way, I was just hoping that we might be able to get some expertise into, into the council force.
Maria, do you want to clarify, um, I, to speak, you clarify the procurement process?
I was just gonna clarify, but I think leaked it at the end, that without us going through the ECA providers, we're not eligible for the ECA subsidy, but as to which is, I'm not sure, yeah.
Further speakers, councillor Ward.
I will be supporting this, um, but I do have reservations to think that, that our current lighting, that when we look at it, it's all pretty good at the moment, that we do not, um, that we really make an opportunity to work with the community and nonprofits and community halls to see if we can pass away our current lighting to them, because I think that, uh, just in a landfill or disposed of somewhere away.
Miss speakers, all right, you're, you're right, councillor Staines.
Aye.
All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye, again.
Okay, okay, now we work down the list, um, identifying the, the next line, additional, additional funding requests and submissions. Are there any there, now that, that some of those have been dealt with in ways? Are there any there, councillor Lord?
Sorry, I've just got a question, I, I see it says in the following, for example, Craigwash the Gasfreaks Museum, it says draft budget was fifty thousand, amount requested was fifty thousand, budget increased fifty thousand, I just, uh, couldn't understand that one. Sorry, so they actually want a hundred thousand? It, it says we've already got fifty thousand on the budget for them. Oh, I see, so they actually asked us for a hundred thousand? Or that's a different fifty? Oh, I see, okay, yeah. Yeah.
So I'm interested, if, if there are any in that list moving down, that, um, someone wants to raise, councillor Hawkes.
Um, happy to discuss Ignite Consultants as an option for, like, ten thousand dollars requested.
Sorry?
I'll second.
Well, you're moving, that's.
A bit of a so.
So, so, um, do you wish to speak to?
None, a bit of reserve, all right.
Right, well, I will, um, speak to this, um, I had, um, similar, uh, information. What I know, the context as I understand it, in front of us, is that there are a number of small community organisations that we would like one, that we probably won't be able to, and it's quite a list of them. But I note that Ignite Consultants, who provide, uh, free consultancy in PR, branding, business development, et cetera, turn off for profit groups, actually, um, do a lot, uh, because they do it for no cost, they provide a very effective service, uh, at the cost of the community. So I support giving, uh, Ignite the ten thousand that they asked for on the basis that that will actually have a multiplier effect to, to, to have all of those groups that can fund their services, so I, I'm, so councillor Wilson.
I, I'm just supportive because, um, they've got a proven track record of being really effective at, at having that multiplier. Um, unlike, I think, some of the other grants that we do give out, I, um, I hope over the next year we're going to be analysing the effectiveness of some of the other grants. Um, having read the paper this week about how hard it is for people to get jobs without having experience, are young people, are there different type of work? Uh, I think what they're doing here is providing a record of, um, a job record for people who just can't get into the job stream either way. And that's really exciting, the way that they've properly packaged it, uh, definitely supported.
Yeah, I, I will also support this for similar reasons to those councillor Wilson's articulated. I think that in terms of, um, teacher or, um, supporting multiple groups at once is a good option. Um, I, I think as well that they are seeking to consolidate and expand, which is, um, another reason I think why supporting them is a good option this year. I think, um, it helps embed what they're trying to do in a civic context, um, rather than, um, being a university based thing, which it has been changed. So, um, I think that's a, a good move to basically win them in this year.
Any further speakers, councillor next.
I've got a deep suspicion of consultancy generally. My experience of it since two thousand and four here is that, uh, a, a lot of consultancy is a lot of licking your finger and putting it in the air and seeing which way the wind is, is blowing. Um, I, I accept that Ignite Consultants may not fall into this category, and, uh, I'm prepared to accept that, um, they do do quite a lot of, um, advice giving to, uh, community groups that may need it. But in the absence of any real evidence, K P Is, um, any, uh, anything other than, some people seem to think it's a good idea. Um, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, but rather begrudgingly, because I would much rather see a, an outcome for ten thousand dollars of ratepayers' money, rather than just the hope that some free consultancy might filter down to some needy community, uh, groups that, that are unnamed. What we're doing is giving ten thousand dollars of the ratepayers' treasure to an organisation who will do with it as they will, and I bet that we need to know a bit more about what they would actually do with it before we give it to them. Benefit of the doubt, but only just.
Councillor Staines.
I will support this resolution, um, one of the difficult areas for any that are trying to do community work is that it's very hard for them to get any contribution towards their operational costs. So they can go out and get money from all sorts of charitable funders, but very few of those funders will fund any of the operations or needed for these, uh, organisations to operate. So I think here we're investing, admittedly, in operational costs, but that will then, uh, transpire into greater advantage to many of the, the organisations in our city who are charitable in nature and looking for increased funding to enable them to deliver more. So I, I see it as an investment in getting more money into those charitable organisations so that they can deliver, uh, to our community, so I fully support it.
Um, right, further speakers. All right, councillor Hawkes.
Um, thank you, um, and I'm, I'm pleased to hear the support around the table for this, as begrudging as it is in, in certain quarters. And, and if I may try and assuage councillor Van Biss's concerns, I've had the pleasure of this semester of, uh, working with, at Ignite Consultants, um, working with the trust board that I'm involved with, and it has been, um, a pretty fantastic experience really, and, um, you know, rightful winners they were of the Supreme Award, this year's Trust Power, uh, Community Awards, given the, the sheer scope of groups, uh, be they, um, art project spaces in this example, or Chat Bus, or Food Share, or any number of, of, of fine, uh, community groups that are offered support, uh, through this. So, um, I would also note that it, it achieved a couple of other things, um, in working towards, uh, graduate retention, uh, hopefully as well. Speaking to executive members of Ignite Consultants, uh, past and present, there's certainly, um, an enthusiasm on their part to stick around and, and work and try and make work for themselves, uh, in Dunedin, uh, after graduation, and that is something that we should be encouraging at any opportunity. And also, um, develops, uh, better relationships between our student population and, and our broader community, which have at times been rather strained, and this, uh, helps, uh, to achieve those outcomes as well. So, um, I'll be supporting this, obviously, and encourage others to do the same.
And I'm gonna put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, care. Councillor Staines.
I'd like to move that, um, we make a grant of ten thousand dollars to the Dunedin Youth Orchestra.
Okay, um, that's Dunedin.
Right on the bottom.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Right.
You got questions?
Nine.
Okay, is there a second of that, councillor Hawkins? Councillor Staines. So, um, councillor Staines.
I think, um, this organisation is, uh, one which looks at youth in our community, it, uh, develops them and provides an ongoing, ongoing source of young musicians to the Dunedin Symphony. Um, it fits in extremely well with our university and the students there that are training in, in the performance area, um, and therefore in effect has a benefit economically for our city as well as culturally. So I believe it's a, it's a good area to invest what is relatively a small amount of money.
And, I'm just, I just want to clarify, um, Jenny and Rebecca both pointed out to me the distinction between, um, uh, two distinctions. One between, uh, voting for one year or an ongoing grant, and the other is whether it's, uh, becomes a civic grant and administered under that. Um, as far as the first, this form is concerned, we're good with, we, when we, um, out, um, move something, this, specify whether it's one year or, or more than one, um, as I understood it, with Ignite Consultants, it's one year.
That's one intention.
Yep.
We worship. Until we have that new policy in place, I think we've always decided anything we do is only for one year, and then we'll revisit them when a new policy's in place.
And so in January you passed the resolution that any new civic grant applications approved this year would be for one year only until the grant's review was completed.
Right, so going to the second of the two distinctions, it probably isn't so important at the moment until that. The main distinction between whether this is a civic grant or solidified grant, until that's been clarified in any case.
It's just which department looks after it, you know, I, I suspect it would just be, become a civic grant.
Councillor next.
Councillor Staines has characterised this ten thousand dollars as an investment. Um, I don't believe that it's a appropriate use of the term, at very best, I think this ten thousand dollars would be a subsidy. And I speak as someone who, uh, used to be a member of this orchestra, albeit some decades ago now. Um, and, uh, in fact, as a kid, I used to come up from Valcluther every week to play at the orchestra, and it was. to play at the orchestra and it was the highlight of the week. It is a wonderful thing to do. It does do a lot of training for our young musicians. But my view is that this orchestra actually has a number of other potential funders. And there are essentially a lot of parents out there who can also afford to fund the relatively moderate costs of running this orchestra. I don't think that it is really, I certainly don't think it's an investment on our part. I think it would be at best a subsidy, which if we were flush, I would still be thinking, well, actually, this is just very much a subsidy of one small cultural section of the community. I don't think under the current circumstances that I can vote ten thousand dollars of ratepayers' money to subsidise this, albeit very good youth orchestra.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm really happy for something to go to this group. I've heard them, I mean Dominic has been fantastic with the way he's come every year and argued their case. And I really hate the fact that we've turned him down every year that I can recall him coming. I was of a mind this year to do something for them. However, I look at what we've done to the museums, to the libraries and to the other cultural sectors in this city. And noting exactly as councillor Staines did, the alliance with Symphony, I would rather see them getting a smaller amount, but trying to work them together without putting them somewhere they don't want to be, where they actually don't double up on costs. And that's where I think if we keep on, if we're looking at these separately, we're actually getting empires building where there could be synergies and we're not forcing the same rigour that we force on libraries and museums to happen. And so I'm going to find it really hard to do ten thousand dollars to this group. I was happy to consider something between two and five and ask it to be matching with the Symphony or working with the Symphony, getting money and working what synergies there could be. And without that rigour, I think we're building stuff that we've tried to get out of an other stream. So I'm finding it a bit tough to support it. And if there was a way that we could bring that rigour to the music groups, I'd be really keen to visit that.
Further speakers. Councillor Law.
Just in view of the fact that last week Jenny, or Mr Councillor McTavish had asked that the DVML other facilities be made available in the grant that we make to the state or to DVML, I'm wondering if we should be able to do a combination. Some cash and maybe offer them a free opportunity to do a concert for their own fundraising purposes at the Town Hall or something like that. Is that a possibility?
Councillor Hawke.
I just have a question about the semantics of whether this is a civic grant or not. And I should not have been asked this, apologies. But is there any difference in terms of reporting back or accountability where a civic grant would be more or less advantageous than a grant?
This is a civic grant application. So the last one was not a civic grant application. It was a submission that went through that didn't suggest a civic grant application. We may get while we're speaking that clarification, but this is.
Oh yeah, I'm aware of this. I'm just wanting to know generally what the difference.
This is a civic.
Look, I'm going to support this motion. I take on board, in comments, councillor Wilson, I think in general, at the moment, council is unable to support the arts and cultural area of the city as well as we traditionally have some other sectors and as well as we would like. And the reason I favour putting it into this particular one, and maybe not into some others, is that it is the youth orchestra. And it's the starting point and it's the seed bed, if you like, for some other, like the Symphony and some other areas. And I think if you don't look after the start of things, then you're not going to end up with anything growing from it. So that's why I support this group. I think it's a relatively, I think both Symphony and this group seem to be able to make very few dollars go a very long way and have had to. So I'm sure that it will be appropriately used. Councillor Staines, would you like to exercise your right of reply? I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, record it please.
Could I show a hand? All those in favour, please say, raise your hand. All those against? It's carried. Okay, now just moving down.
Sorry, Bishop. I'm going to go back up to the request from Smithons. I want to, just the process, put ten thousand dollars up for the Brockville Community Support Trust.
The which one, sorry?
The Brockville Community Support Trust. I know it's a pathetic amount of money, but they said, they did ask, they said, they didn't put a quantum to the amount, they said anything. I asked a specific question, they said anything would help. They didn't, I asked them what quantum they asked for, they said anything that could help them. The problem, I understand, and I know, so I don't understand the politics of what has happened except with it, this is a three-year grant, it's a three-year grant. They have had the brakes put on them with the type of work they're doing and have been doing, which they will be, they will be no long.
Is there a second of that?
Well, I'd just like to ask a question of staff. And that is, when they came and spoke, they made some statement that their funding had ended early.
Not early, the, they received a DIA or a Department of Internal Affairs funding, community development funding grant, and that's a three-year fund. And so they've come to the end of their three years. They sought an extension of that three years for an additional year and that was declined. Very few are ever given an extension. And I think some of the issues is at the front end, just getting organised enough to use it right off the mark. And so that's why they made the request.
And the nature of that funding from DIA, how much was that? Do you know?
I would be making that up, but it's generally eighty or ninety thousand a year for a three-year.
Yeah, all right, I'm having a second for the purpose of debate.
Right, being moved to carry on.
So, this, I think the values in there is to keep something going. And I don't know what that something is, but I am really concerned about that community, that everything will run, fall off. They need to have some administrative role to carry some of those really neat projects going. And otherwise, I think that the whole investment the DIA has made could actually be wasted. And I don't know that this is the best way of doing this. I in fact know that it probably isn't, but if we don't do it now, then it probably won't happen at all. And so I, in order to get something out of what has been gone, and I just think it's, we have to do something. It's a token gesture to it, but I think we need to do something.
Yeah, we're just speaking to that. I mean, I think in the three years that I've sat around this table, I've watched that community every year come in and speak to some of the incredible projects that they have managed to get off the ground, up the everything from community gardens and community orchards, through to supporting residents to improve the energy efficiency, through to building community volunteer programmes and things like that based around the school there. So I think in terms of what the DIA have achieved with their funding, I think it is pretty incredible. And I think we're probably going to end up or see ourselves in a similar situation with North East Valley and that sort of thing into the future. I think there is a piece of work that we need to do to be better understand how we can support these communities. My view is similar to that of councillor Wilson. This community is passionate about what they do. They say that they're going to keep on going anyway. And but I am so aware of the need for a coordinator or support to ensure that that work does keep going and that someone is coordinating and ensuring that the organisation that's so critical to facilitating community outcomes does continue. So I think this is a transition year. They may well be able to continue without our support into the future, but putting in a small amount of money now may be the difference between them being able to sort the transition and them not being able to sort the transition.
Further speakers. Councillor Law.
I'd have to acknowledge that the Brockville community are obviously working well together and there are some really enthusiastic noble folk who are doing things in their community that perhaps may not, may not have, well, it wouldn't have happened clearly if they didn't have a DIA grant for the three years. But I think I would, I'm going to struggle to support it. Not because I don't want to see things happen in Brockville. I would much rather the city provide support in kind. And what I can recall of their submission in respect to having some sort of water source available for their community gardens and that sort of thing, I would rather see the water department perhaps provide advice on. I'd rather see the water department perhaps provide advice for rainwater harvesting from their existing buildings in the vicinity. And if it can't be collected on site, perhaps using a residential grilling to achieve the same purpose and have the water reticulated to the site, something like that. I would rather the city provide that sort of support. Excepting, they didn't ask for funding for any particular purpose. And, you know, I would like councillor McTavish, I wouldn't like to see, I suppose, the momentum disappear. But I'm reluctant to essentially put some money towards something that we haven't actually really been asked for. That would be my concern.
Rebecca.
Can I just clarify the water connection? City development worked with the Parks Department to ensure water at the community orchard site. And that was put in the very day that they presented to council, which was a remarkable sluke. However, they're still seeking water for, and the Parks Department came back and suggested that that was exceptional timing. But the water connection to the community garden is still not in.
Councillor Law.
Yeah, look, I can support this. I just think of it purely as a very disadvantaged community. They've got a whole lot of issues going on. And I think, as councillor Wilson says, to in some way help them transition from being in a position where they're getting the DIA grant to nothing, I think it would be just really good to encourage this community.
Further speakers.
Can we have a motion now?
If you're speaking to us, it's not a question.
Is the, is the, pretty simple, is the ten thousand dollars be given to the Brockville Community Support Trust? Is that?
Yep.
I struggle with this one personally because, given the constrained financial circumstances, I'd like to see every grant that we give perceptibly making a difference and knowing what difference we hope that will be. And if they were on anything like ninety thousand a year before, this is not going to make much difference at all. And I struggle with just saying, oh, well, there's consolation prize, it might offer. Frankly, it probably won't. So I would struggle to support this. Councillor Van de Wissens, would you wish to speak?
Yes, similarly, although taking into account what councillor Law has said about this being a community that really does have issues and is working hard to try and address those, my reservations come down more specifically to those presented by councillor Noon, where he's not sure that this is really something that was particularly asked for and that echoing the mayor's sentiments, not really sure what the outcome of it will be. And yeah, in a more flush situation, by all means, but I equally struggle there.
Further speakers. Councillor Wilson, you have a right of reply.
I was, I asked a question about quantum and they didn't want, they hadn't done that work. I think they're still smarting from what has happened to them with DIA and trying to get their extension. They, Reverend quite clearly told me, I thought, that any quantum would assist. I've worked in community groups long enough to know that having one person adminning these projects is vital. It underpins progress happening. I think if we want to have that discussion with water about, they need to have someone in a position who has that authority to do it. I think one of the projects that Theresa Stevenson was very keen on and never seemed to progress is the walk around the reservoir up there. They need someone to underpin that work. It won't be a full-time job by any means. It might be a couple of hours every fortnight, but they need to have someone being able to be that conduit for information. What I find is sad about this discussion is that we're looking at it as Brockville. For me, it's about growing Dunedin and the value that we could get out of continuing the work. Albert, a lot less is, it's having an informant in there that can inform us better to make the city be a greater place. And it's really easy to, for a lot of communities to self-fund those. It isn't easy for this community to do that. This ten thousand, I don't think will do the job, but it gives them the step, it's seed funding for them to now go to other funders and say, we've got ten thousand, can you match that or can you give us five thousand? If we give them nothing, they won't have that opportunity. And I've been in positions where I've seen how communities can grow with this wee bit. I've also seen where it can really smart. And they're hurting at the moment. And I think anything we can do to make them feel valued by the whole city is giving the right message.
I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? It's a carry.
Councillor Vincent Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Calvert.
Staines.
Councillor Hall.
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Law.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Noon.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
Aye.
Aye. Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Van de Wissens.
No.
Councillor Wiley.
Aye.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Cal.
Aye.
Motion carries ten two with one exception.
Moving down the list.
Bishop.
Yeah, councillor Hawke.
Can I look at Mountain Bike Otago for ten thousand dollars?
Is there a second of that councillor Hawke? Second? Right, speaking to the motion councillor.
I think if we look at Mountain Bike Otago and look at what they've produced over the years for essentially little money from council, you're asking for ten thousand dollars for the, looking at the tracks and the work that goes on, especially through their own organisation and helpers. And I think this is a great community asset. We really need to continue supporting it, even if it is only ten thousand dollars. And they really are putting Dunedin on the map as a great place to ride a bike.
And councillor Hawke, do you wish to speak at the moment?
Originally, Mountain Bike used to put in tracks about wide enough to ride a bike there. The first job I got involved with them, I convinced them to forest a park to make it wide enough for access for everybody. And they've carried this on and I support it.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm torn with this. This community group, a fantastic bunch of people. They've done a huge amount for the city. In fact, they've recently helped with an event in Middlemarch, which just shows how the breadth of their work. Albert, I think they'll survive on five thousand and I will support it up to five thousand. I can't think, I just can't see that we're in a position every year to do it. And I think we have to send the message that we are supportive, but you don't have to give them everything they ask for to show that message. So I'm going to vote against this and support a, indicate a subsequent motion of five thousand.
Further speakers now. I would note that this is specifically a request for an ongoing grant. So I'll come back to the mover and seconder. Did you intend it to be ongoing councillor Wiley or?
We, sorry, just, we did move a motion at the, when we went out of the draft plan to say that we wouldn't be doing this yet.
I was just picking up on the, no. Further speakers.
Can we have the motion up then? It's a question, not a, not a speaking to.
It's actually a request.
But it doesn't come into a speaker.
Is there any further speakers? Councillor Noon.
Uh, once again, you're going to struggle to support this one as well. Uh, my reasons would be that this organisation has obviously been successful creating a, a public asset. And I admire the, the effort, uh, from, from this group. Um, but they have proved historically that they reach out to a, sort of a wide network of, of people within our community who can shoulder tap, can, uh, uh, create all sorts of support and kind. And I'm not against mountain biking, in fact, I, I get on a mountain bike from, from time to time. Some would argue I don't get on often enough. But, um, I, I think they are a group, simply because of their successful track record. That's why I can't support them. Uh, they've proved in the past that they can achieve things on their own and, uh, I really do admire what they have achieved.
Do you, councillor Van Der Wissel?
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Noon. Um, this is a great group of people, they've done amazing amounts of, uh, volunteer work and they've built some infrastructure, which isn't just for them to use, but, uh, uh, and all over the place. But we're talking about ratepayers' money here, we're talking about a very short supply and we're talking about trying to make a difference with it. And I believe Mountain Bike Otago was strong enough and have enough alternative funding sources to be able to not have to have this one. So I'll be joining councillor Noon and voting against.
Councillor Calvert and then councillor McTavish.
I'd like to follow his worship's lead when he says he wants the situation to be that every grant makes a difference and knowing what the difference would be. And I don't think this grant would make a difference that I would know.
Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, it's an interesting one, I, I mean, I, I, my personal, in, in hearing from them, um, the, the, basically every mountain bike track in this city is thanks to these guys having put in the work to ensure that it, that it exists. And, um, I, I do hear talk of the potential for Dunedin to be, um, one of the places to mountain bike. Um, I see Rotorua is the headline in our, um, LGNZ, um, brief this morning, um, for exactly that reason. Um, I, I, I do think there is potential in that and this group has quite clearly articulated what its vision is for progressing the work that would put Dunedin on the map in that regard. And I think there is an argument if this council would like to be maximising or even, um, pursuing that, that potential outcome, um, we should be supporting the work of this organisation because that's what this organisation is doing. Bit by bit, it's chipping away at, um, ensuring that we have a network of high-class tracks. Um, I support the fact that they have decided to finish all of their existing works before they embark on new ones. I think that's, um, a really pragmatic step and one that I think, um, our staff have been having discussions with them and that's, and that's great. So I think there is an argument that, um, this is well-placed money. Um, I acknowledge that they are a successful organisation, but I think it is difficult, it's a, it's a difficult position for us to take that we will only support those organisations that are failing for some reason or other. If, um, if, if, if there are successful organisations out there that are doing successful things, um, without council support, I guess the question is what might they achieve if they were supported by council? So, um, yeah, I struggle with the arguments around the table and, um, I think because of the vision that was articulated and the strong, um, steps that they are taking towards enacting that vision, um, I think I will be supporting this.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, look, I think, I think, um, councillor McTavish has said fairly well what I was thinking. Uh, and I think that I can definitely support this in view of the fact that what they've already achieved. Yep.
Uh, well, I'll be supporting this as well. Um, this is an organisation that hasn't just put its money, uh, some effort in. They've actually bought their own capital equipment in some cases, uh, which is, and the difference it'll make to them is that that won't all have to come out of their pocket. They've put an enormous amount in and the, in the city and the community has been a beneficiary of that. Uh, it will be ongoing, so. Councillor Wiley, you would like to reply?
I think if, uh, Mountain Bike Otago were only using these tracks, uh, as mountain bikers then I wouldn't be close to supporting this motion, uh, or putting it forward. Because the track is so widely used by the community in all aspects of the community, uh, with walkers, um, especially dog walkers all the way through, uh, getting kids on bikes, I think that's a great asset. The one thing picking up on councillor Noon, um, comment and is that, are we going to penalise those organisations that are really professional, well organised and strongly supported by their own people? You know, this is a great, great asset for the city and I think we really need to support the great assets, uh, people putting together our great assets.
Okay. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's carried. Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Benson-Pope. I'm wondering if I could just ask about the St Kilda Brass Band. I know there's been, there was some discussion about this and really the question is about the status of the eleven thousand that they got previously and I was, I think I asked people, but it was, it was obviously a one-off. Is that a mirror of the situation we've just had in terms of others where they were given one year's grant? Just as we have done for several organisations, um, and if, if we were to need to do anything about it?
Rebecca.
They've previously received two three-year grants. So they've, so in, in the end, we can't, in the current financial year is the, the last year of their, their second three-year grant. So you, you decide whether a grant, usually if we're not in a year like this, you usually decide if, if the grants are one-off, a limited term, which is what St Kilda Brass or ongoing.
And have, did they, did they formally apply for a further grant or are they doing it as part of this process?
They're doing it as part of this process.
In that case, can I ask, is their situation similar to some of the pipe bands round town? Where they have significant involvement in civic, in so local activities that call on.
Um, they, we do use St Kilda Brass for some activities such as Sunday sounds. However, as with all grant, all bands that we use for those, uh, we pay them fee for service.
Well, sorry, last question before I decypher, am I going to do it or not? If I may.
Absolutely.
Um, is, is, um, the, this, if we were to not continue funding the St Kilda Brass Band, would that be a different type of treatment from what other brass bands and pipe bands are giving?
No, so, so until last year, the City of Dunedin Pipe Band and the St Kilda Brass Band were the only two bands that received a civic, civic grant. No other organisation, no other bands get civic grants, only those two did. And, and this current financial year is the last year for both of those organisations.
All right. Do you, uh, are you reminded of anything, councillor?
Not after that last answer.
Right. Is there anything else on that page? And that, we've, we've exhausted this quite carefully, so.
Um, I, I, I'm concerned about surf life-saving. Um, I'm, I'm, the submission raised issues for me, I don't, I'm going to get to the motion in a minute, but I want to have a discussion. Um, as to what the surface, our knowledge of the service that we get and what we feel comfortable with the service. Um, I do think it's hard to leave a group at zero increase for inflation when there's employment involved. And I'm, I mean, I would hate us to turn down an increase in here and have an accident. Um, I, I was going to consider a motion of thirteen thousand, which goes some way to what they want, but doesn't go all the way by any means, but subject to a report coming back to us for assessment as to the service provision and how, and the hours that that service is provided during the, uh, forthcoming year.
So can I?
Thirteen thousand.
So you, are you asking?
Well, that is a question, but in that's the context of where I'm thinking of taking that in that. Okay.
Mr. Reese. Uh, you may not have been picking up on, councillor Wilson has asked about the situation with surf life-saving and asked for some extra money and indicated that, say, I'm not comfortable, um, allocating money on the basis of a report that comes later.
Not, yeah, yeah.
You know, so either, either we, you know, allocate it or we don't.
Okay. My, I, I'm mindful to move for purposes of discussion, thirteen thousand dollars, which goes halfway to the funding and gives them something to match with other organisations. The other concern I have is the lack, when they submitted off.
Let's just see, second, second, councillor, let's take that far.
Well, and the other issue I had is my lack of understanding when they submitted. And I think around the table, our lack of clarity as to what service demand there is and service level there is. And I don't think we're in a position today, um, to say what is right or wrong. What I want to ensure is that we have the coverage for the forthcoming year and then have the chance to analyse if it's the coverage we need and expect we need. And so that's why I wanted to put two motions together. Um, so one is thirteen thousand, which goes partway to the funding and gives them an opportunity to match it. And the second part is to ensure that we get a report back that gives us that clarity for the long-term plan year.
Moving to the ten in both, you know, this discussion.
This is me making my statement. Um, I'm supporting this because I think if surf life-saving seems to be a local issue compared with other safety things, because I consider it essentially a safety thing. Um, I think we should, it's arguably something which could be done inside the council, not outside the council. But we're lucky that it's done outside the council by people who therefore produce a better service than we would if we probably did it inside because they can lever, leverage off other things. I think that if we're going to spend money on safety traffic management and orange cones all over the place, the least we could do is spend money on useful life-saving sorts of things and I think this is one of them.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, worship. Um, I, I too recognise and I think everyone around the table, the, the safety aspect that, uh, this organisation provides, or the service that they provide right throughout the city, um, in about four or five different locations. And it's not only that, it's that the organisation also provides opportunities for young folk. Uh, not only to, obviously to learn to, to swim, but they provide, uh, educational programmes, uh, and, and means of, uh, learning first aid. They provide opportunities to partake in, in competitions throughout, uh, the country uh, against other surf life-saving clubs. So I think all in all, it provides a pretty positive, um, it's a pretty positive organisation providing positive aspirations for young people and, and that's the other reason along with the safety reason, uh, that I'm supporting this on.
Councillor Van Der Wissel.
I agree that this group does wonderful work and that they have, um, all sorts of very important roles to play. I, I note that, um, they don't just do the beaches that are local here, they even, uh, check out places like Tunnel Beach. I was most surprised to be there one day and have their boat roaring up and, and, uh, doing the, the whole baywatch thing. I was really quite impressed. Um, having said that, oh, it wasn't quite that good getting there. Um, having said that, um, uh, they are very well-resourced. Um, they have lots of opportunities for getting funding from other places. Um, and they have, um, I think, a, a, a very well-established and positive track record that councillor Noon has already, uh, referred to. Um, sadly for this reason, I can't support it. Um, because giving thirteen thousand dollars to an organisation that already has, um, a lot of very good gear, uh, already has all the, uh, volunteers that it really needs, um, to me is, uh, a, a, a situation where ratepayers' funds really need to go elsewhere. So for, for their very success reasons, really, again, I simply can't, um, uh, 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 vote, vote for this, even though, um, I'm sure that they are very worthy organisation.
Councillor Noon.
Thanks, yeah, I'm, I'm supporting, uh, this motion. Um, we're, we're supporting a well-organised and high-value, um, uh, movement, which, um, you know, which has enhanced, I think Dunedin's reputation as a surfing, a place to surf, a place to use the, the ocean. And they are clearly, um, working hard at it because I was surprised at the number of rescues they listed in their submission. Um, and, uh, I just think they, um, they, they are a great community asset and we should support them.
Councillor Wilson, you would like to reply? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Could I have a show of hands please on those supporting this?
Could we, could we have?
Division.
There's two parts, you've, you've probably voted in the first part.
And, uh, the report, what's the?
I thought there were two separate.
It's still the two separate ones and they're not, uh, interfering with each other.
Okay, well, we'll provide this one.
It should, it should be a further, we, we allocated a further thirteen thousand, Jenny? It should be dedicated a further thirteen thousand, please.
It's saving them.
Could we not vote until we've actually got, we're voting for somewhere where we can see it?
Right, um, yes.
Okay, no, well, that was right. We've already voted. Councillor Benson-Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Calvert.
Aye.
Councillor Hall.
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Noon.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Van Der Wissel.
No.
Councillor Wiley.
Dogs.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Cal.
Aye.
Motion carries eleven two.
Now, the second, um, motion, if we just take it, you want to get it up? If you might just clarify with Jenny exactly the rule.
Look at me.
Oh, you've got it, okay, sorry.
The wording is the council seek a report before the two thousand fifteen sixteen earthquake.
Is there any one, one further discuss this one? Or I put it? I think I'll put it that, that city. Two, offered two thus city, yeah.
I see.
Yeah, um, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. This might be a, we seem to have got to the bottom of the front page and this might be appropriate time to ask Carolyn, um, where we're at to something else.
If we want.
Okay. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, um, I'd like to move two motions. Uh, one, that council approve an increase in the DPAG acquisitions budget of ten thousand dollars for the twenty fourteen fifteen year. And two, that's consequential to the arts and culture strategy as part of the twenty fifteen sixteen long-term plan process. Options be developed to increase this budget incrementally over the following ten years through both public and private funding.
Is there a, let's take them one at a time.
Yep.
Okay, the first one is a second of that, which is that the acquisitions budget of the DIA. Second, councillor Benson-Pope. Um, speaking to that councillor. Yep, let's do one at a time.
Yep.
Have a turn.
Um, although these points will perhaps be repetitive, um, Dunedin Public Art Gallery is looking set to break its own, uh, attendance figures again for this year, uh, largely due to the support of this council and council's previous in maintaining it as a, a public facility um, and, and free access to it. As such, um, we have a fairly phenomenal, uh, permanent collection, but our current funding of this and, and for some time actually is essentially letting it stagnate by stealth. Um, we, there needs to be a long-term, uh, solution to this and I don't think we're in a situation financially where we can be bankrolling that and hence the, um, public and private funding mentioned in the second motion. But I think, uh, a marginal increase in. But I think, uh, a marginal increase in, I mean, ten thousand dollars, um, if forty thousand dollars buys you a whole lot of not much, a ten thousand dollars may not seem to contribute all that much more to that situation. But I think what it does signal in the, in the coming financial years is that, um, we do see this as something that needs to be addressed long-term. Uh, and, and that is addressed in, in, in motion two as, um, as something to be addressed through the fifteen sixteen long-term plan process.
Counselor Wilson.
Um, as someone who put my, I think my first motion at council with an annual plan was a fifty thousand increase to DPAG, and successfully so, um, which I think in subsequent years is now being taken out, I have a lot of sympathy for, um, the arguments that Counselor Hawkins has just put. However, and someone has told me about that I haven't yet seen their card in this morning's paper. And, um, a new reality has upon us, um, than was there in two thousand and seven or eight when I put that motion. Um, I can't support this as much as I agree, not being able to support it, it is not a must-have. Um, and until the art strategy is out, um, I ca, I, I don't, I think it's, um, early, too early to consider it. I also think that while art galleries are really, really important, um, public art is equally so. And considering we haven't allotted any funds to that, um, I see no balance in doing it just to the art gallery at present. I won't be supporting this motion.
Counselor Vance.
As Counselor Hawkins has correctly pointed out, the Dunedin Public Art Gallery has a phenomenal permanent collection. It's worth many, many millions of dollars, and most of it has been donated. The, um, stagnation by stealth of the connection is, I think, a quite valid, um, uh, problem. And I think that that problem is best overcome by a change in policy of the Dunedin Public Art Gallery. And that is that they should look at at least the possibility of selling off some artworks that are deemed to be of lesser interest or not of particular importance or suitable in fact for other organisations, but not so for them, and using those amounts of money to, uh, get new works. I believe also that if we don't fund, uh, new works, the Dunedin Public Art Gallery, it then sends a much clearer message to the private, uh, sector. The people who have traditionally donated all the really expensive and major works to the Dunedin Public Art Gallery, that really we see that as, uh, their, uh, uh, role. I think it will also, um, actually help for people when they realise that the city's not in a position to fund significant artworks, and we are not. Anything we throw at them is going to be of really no significance at all, if you look at the cost of artworks these days. Um, I think it will send a message to people who are considering bequests, uh, to actually say, well, look, we love the art gallery, we love what it's got. We recognise that it's bequests that has got it to the state of having the phenomenal permanent collection that Counselor Hawkins has referred to. And what we need to do is we need to focus our, our efforts into actually maximising that bequest potential for the art gallery, rather than throwing, quite frankly, pitiful amounts of ten thousand dollars at it here or there, um, which I don't think are going to make any difference at all. Uh, so, um, much as I, uh, uh, recognise, uh, the stagnation by stealth of the connection, uh, collection issue that's been brought up, and how, uh, how, how actually wide the value is of having the permanent collection that we've got. It's got all sorts of spin-offs, not just for the politic, not just for tourism, not just for people's sense of, uh, this is a real city and we have some wonderfully beautiful things that we can go and visit every time we want, a bit of a spiritual uplifting. Uh, all of those things I see as having incredible value. I don't see us throwing small change, quite frankly, in the art world, small change at it, as, uh, doing anything positive. And I think it may even be counterproductive if people considering bequests consider that, well, actually this is something that ECC funds. I don't think we should.
Counselor Karen.
I agree with Counselor Vandervis at least, part of the way. But I think there's a bigger problem there, if we're never having anything sold. We take the risk that we end up with most of the money that they take to support themselves being going on insurance and storage. Because that's what will happen if we just keep collecting more and more artwork and nothing's ever sold. I'd like to see, um, the art gallery having a look at its collection and actually thinking seriously about where it's going. Instead of just collecting like a little bird all the shiny objects it can find, with the consequent effect on just insurance and storage in the long term. I think we want to actually look more carefully about the art collection, which is not to say that we're not very lucky and very well-served by our art people and the collections they're making. But my heart sank when I found that they never consider selling anything. I don't think that's the way to go, and I agree that throwing ten thousand dollars at it makes no difference to that, but it will be an insurance and storage problem.
Counselor McTavish.
Thank you, worship. I may well support this next year, but I don't support it this year. And the reason why I don't support it this year is in the context of what we have turned down, which is, um, ten thousand dollars towards a sculpture trust proposal, which would enable staff to work with the community to leverage public money to do just what Counselor, um, Hawkins' second motion is going to seek to do, which is attract further private funding for art in the city. Um, so I can support his second motion, which, um, is pending. Um, but I won't be supporting this in the context of having turned down that ten thousand dollars for a project which would have sought exactly what I think we need to be working to achieve. Um, and I think that would be sending a very unfortunate signal to our community.
Counselor Watt.
I've got a bit, bit of a dilemma on this one because I am on the Dunedin Public Art Gallery Society and the great people. But, um, I'm sorry, I won't be supporting it, um, for some of the reasons already raised, but also because of my belief that we should be charging entrance fees for non-residents.
Any further? Counselor Benson Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am supportive of this. I've also previously been involved with the, it's the Counselor Houghtey some time ago on the acquisitions committee. Um, and also appears people realise at the time of the, um, development of the superb gallery, which we now own, in the middle of the city, which was going to, of course, um, be, uh, the, the end of the art world and any visitors to the gallery, um, in the city. Because people would only ever want to go to Logan Park. Well, the nonsense of that argument has proven to be true. And we now house what is arguably the equal, first, best art collection in public hands in this country. And a gallery superbly constructed out of reused buildings before that became fashionable by the city in the middle of the city. And that is an extraordinary drawcard, um, for Dunedin. And was demonstrated, the value of which was demonstrated over the weekend, while hundreds of proud parents, grandmothers and god knows who else are here for the celebrations around another graduation, take the opportunity to look at that collection and enjoy it. Uh, it's true that the collection has been largely, uh, publicly, privately donated, and we are very fortunate about that, as has so many of the important exhibits in the Atari Museum. That is not a reason for the derisory levels of civic support that go to the art gallery. Um, the, um, some of the comments about, I don't know, um, little birds collecting shiny objects, I find fairly offensive and puerile, but I won't dwell on that. We have an extraordinary collection. We, we do not value enough the work of the people who try to augment that connection. Of course, we should be encouraging further benefactors to make major contributions because the sort of artworks that we own and exhibit and are proud of are extremely valuable items. Uh, and I think we should even by a little bit empower the acquisitions committee and those people who are constantly trying to find ways of actually continuing to improve that, not allow it to degrade, but continually improve that collection. I think this is a small amount comparatively, and I think the motion, further that the motion that Counselor Hawkins foreshadows, uh, is actually a sensible way to get council into a position where it actually faces up to a longstanding failure to meet its commitments.
Next speaker, Counselor Hawkins, you'll write a reply.
Um, no, I don't have anything particular to, uh, to add to that barnstorming address from Counselor Benson Pope. Um, aside to note that it is always good to have, uh, on record those who are advocates for, uh, selling down our public assets. In this case, the aforementioned phenomenal permanent collection of the Dunedin Public Art Gallery. But I'll save that one, uh, for another day. Um, we have, uh, we have a great collection, but that isn't an excuse, uh, not to develop it. Um, I do see a s, I have a slightly different perspective perhaps on the division between, uh, public art and the public art gallery. Um, I don't see them necessarily as, uh, separate entities. And given that we have a space, a beautiful space in the middle of our city that is free, uh, for our community to access, then that to me is a public art. And the difference between, um, putting ten thousand dollars in the budget for acqui, acquisitions is that that will be used to acquire work, rather than the ten thousand dollars that wasn't approved by this council, which was to investigate the options of doing work. So they are slightly different, and I think that that work will be more thoroughly addressed, uh, should we choose, uh, to pass, uh, the second of these motions. Thanks.
Right, I'm going to put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
No, it's lost.
Let's have a division of those, thanks Theresa.
Counselor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Counselor Calvert.
Aye.
Counselor Hall.
Aye.
Counselor Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Counselor McTavish.
No.
Counselor Noon.
No.
Counselor Pete.
No.
Counselor Staines.
No.
Counselor Vandervis.
No.
Counselor Wiley.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Mea Cal.
No.
That was close.
Motion asked, ten, two.
Now, the, your other, um, motion, um, Jenny, this is brilliant.
It's a good debate to be had, it's a good one.
Um, well, can I, while, while we're just absorbing this, I'm conscious of the fact that we have, A, a council meeting starting at one o'clock, B, that we haven't finished this quite, and there's probably another hour, three quarters of an hour in this, and that some of us round the table have other commitments now. So I'm going to suggest that we reconvene this meeting immediately after the council meeting this afternoon, given that we wouldn't know how long the council meeting this afternoon is going to go anyway. Um, but I think that's the best way of achieving, uh, what we need to achieve, is everyone, and, check, will you? So we'll, we'll, we'll put this one, and then we'll come back to this. There's not a huge amount yet to do, but it would take us longer than, um, would make getting to the council meeting at, at one comfortable, I think. Um, now, do you wish to speak to this? Does anyone wish to speak to this motion?
Yes.
Counselor Moon.
My, my only reservation is apart from the fifteen, fifteen sixteen, or fifteen.
Sixteen.
Well, it's a long-term plan, I suppose.
Very short-term, long-term.
It's the fifteen twenty, twenty-five, whatever it's going to be, the long-term plan. It's a ten-year plan. My, my only reservation, and, and I'm not against the idea, but my only reservations, uh, increase this budget incrementally over the following ten years. And I'm sort of putting the cat forward a horse to a certain extent, but I suppose the idea is to sow the seed. Only just, my only reservations are that are we, are we making a decision in advance of considering fifteen sixteen long-term plan? If you convince me that's not a problem, uh, and we're going to thoroughly debate this again at a later date, I could probably support it. But that's my only, that's my only, uh, reservation.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. My intention was that it was developed as part of the fifteen sixteen long-term plan process. So options at how we can do this are brought up as part of that. Was that answer your?
That helps if that's your, your intention. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making a decision today that could potentially impact on our, I suppose, open mind in the approach to the fifteen sixteen plan. That would all be.
What do we put, look at? I see the bud, this budget should really put into the Dunedin Public Art Gallery.
Mr. Chair.
Um, yes.
Sorry, just, well, I guess I'm speaking to her. It's, it's asking to the, for the development of options. There's no commitment to anything.
No, sorry, no.
I don't, I understand the Counselor, but it's not second-guessing any future budgets or.
Uh, the Turbey doesn't recommend any, Counsel Staves.
I think, I think we do need to just indicate which budget.
Yeah, the DPAG.
DPAG acquisitions budget.
Further speakers? Counsel, aye. Right, we can put, you want, camps, um, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
We have one.
Can we ask, since this is a, since divisions are handling alphabetically, can we ask that the mayor who's not doing it as a chairman, but is just as part of the deliberative process, is in alphabetical order like the rest of it?
There's a process, divisions will, will follow the process.
Counselor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Counselor Calvert.
Aye.
Counselor Hall.
Aye.
Counselor Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Absent.
Counselor McTavish.
Aye.
Counselor Noon.
Aye.
Counselor Pete.
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
Counselor Staines.
Aye.
Counselor Vandervis.
No.
Counselor Wiley.
Aye.
Counselor Wilson.
Aye.
Mea Cal.
Aye.
Motion carried, my answer's ready.
Okay, right, Ca, Counsel Wilson.
Your worship, but I, I appreciate that you think, that, I'm, I'm just wondering if people want to indicate the purposes of getting staff here, or how the methods they want to bring up. Now, it would be helpful, then we, I mean, then we're not guessing what the intention is, and we can paint better. I mean, I personally don't want any more money at it, um.
Well, let me, uh, because, I mean, pretty much you exhausted that, um, first page. And that covers everything on the last page as far as I can tell. So is there anything that anyone wants to, uh, to Counsel Benson Pope?
Um, I have about three things. I think the first one was just a question in relation to whatever it was that the cricket people were asking, because I don't have, I wasn't sure we'd addressed that. The second one was similarly about, uh, Mr. Harvey and the prison, the redevelopment of the prison. And the third of the four things was, I can't recall a response to the request for development of policy about the use of bales on bikes to avoid conflict on the, on the shared parts of walkways. I think we need to discuss that or refer it somewhere. And the last one on my shopping list was the question of, um, the comments made in Ms. Butler's submissions, which are multiple actually, um, and whether or not, or what we do with them and whether we make approaches as are requested to the people who were referred to in those submissions.
Okay, was, let, let's hold that. Now, is there anyone else who wants to, is there anyone else who wants to raise anything? Counsel McTavish.
Yeah, your worship, I, I, I know the staff probably can show you this, but I, I have some, some, therefore the miss submission submission, and I would like to not move the full quantum, but a contribution towards it.
Then, given that's the case, we're certainly not going to get that done, or that done in half an hour. So I think we'll stick with the plan to re, um, reconvene after the council meeting this afternoon. So we'll adjourn that.
We've organised lunch twelve thirty in the Atari room. Twelve, twelve thirty, I'm not sure.
Right, councillors, what was your? Now, we, we got to the end of the, um, requests for funding, um, largely, but we've had a, um, paper, a page circulated, um, itemising the things that we had yet to, um, address. Some of these have been raised by councillors, um, already, so that's why they're on this, um, piece of paper. Um, councillor Stan.
I asked the question, but I keep it deep just before we broke, um, about just what's happening there. This is something to do really with our insurance and all sorts of interest operating costs that came from the refurbishment project.
So I'm going to add that to this list and we will address it along the time. Are there any other submissions, um, that we haven't, um, gone through in the decision sheet that councillors feel we need to address and we haven't looked at? Councillor McTavish.
Well, your worship, I'm here to test the will of the meeting in relation to the Methodist mission, um, and move, um, that we apply fifteen thousand dollars to the initiative, um, thank you. Um, given that I now have a second day. Um, and that would be subject to them, um, obtaining full funding for the project. Um, I note in the staff response to this, um, and I thank staff for the response, um, they note that it is in alignment with our social wellbeing strategy, that, um, the establishment of such a service, um, would be desirable. Um, however, um, it is the staff who and I agree with them, that the council should not be the core funder of such a service. Um, the Methodist mission have gone out and obtained additional funding for this. I think they've got about thirty thousand or something to that effect. Um, they're seeking forty thousand from councils, which would be core funding. Um, what I think this would be saying is councillors supportive, we do see some synergies, um, and we acknowledge that in the current environment, there are a number of people who are suffering in our community because they're not getting their full entitlement and because they're not able to access, um, independent advice about that entitlement. Um, however, we're not willing to be the core funder, as other cities are not the core funder of the service. So, um, uh, that's, that's why I am.
Moving it, did you have a say in it?
Yes.
Councillor Lord, um, speakers. Councillor Noon.
Did you say forty?
No, sorry, they're seeking forty thousand, I'm proposing fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, I'm speaking in support of, of the motion. I think that, um, I mean, Methodist mission have come along, uh, possibly for the last two or three years, saying a similar thing about the amount of money that has been, um, uh, not accessed, uh, by beneficiaries, uh, in our community. And I think if, if there's something that we can do in a small way to ensure that those folk, uh, are able to, uh, gain their entitlement, I think it's got to be a good thing and improve councillor McTavish. I mean, there's folk that, um, are at the very bottom of the, um, well, they're, they're struggling at the, um, the end of the society and, um, I think a little leg up would be, uh, would be appropriate. And the fact that we don't become the key funder or primary funder in the future, I think, you know, making that clear message in the, uh, support of Methodist mission is also important.
Mr. Chair, what's your?
Councillor Benson Pope. Um, I don't know if it's a change that may well have, but I am in a position to say that the Ministry of Social Development did used to recently provide exactly a service like this focused on ensuring that people were being informed and accessing what they're actually involved in. I don't know whether that's changed, may have, may not, but I don't support councillors getting involved in that because I believe that's a core function of the ministry. That's one of the things it's about, actually. Um, so, yeah.
Well, maybe it's inappropriate time and, and maybe I can be corrected by, um, staff being aware about this for me, but I understood that the policy that the, that the ministry had changed and that they, staff were instructed there not to inform or offer any benefit unless it was specifically asked for, which begs the question as to how do you know about it? I may be wrong about that, just going to your point, I think that was a, a specific policy change by government.
Well, if I, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, but if that's true, I mean, I like that followed up. I'm sure the media can do the job and do that. That would be an absolute outrage in my view.
Right, Rupert, do you have any comment here?
Just that, um, the submitter during the oral presentation submitted exactly what he said. I, I can't confirm one way. I'll just move ahead.
If there has been a ministry changes, as has been suggested, to me, this would be all the more reason for not funding this. Central government has in many ways in the past found ways to devolve its responsibility for doing a number of things and getting local councils to do them instead. If the ministry has had a change in terms of the advice it gives and now wants us to fund it, uh, all the more reason for saying, no thanks, this is your job, um, uh, it falls very much to you to try and expect the rate payers of Dunedin to pay for advice that you should be giving out of rates on their properties is simply not tenable. Uh, if the ministry hasn't changed its situation and is giving this advice, then there is no need to subsidise press creative support or anyone else into, um, trying to also do, do the job. In either case, I can't see a strong argument for putting rate payers' dollars into this advisory, uh, position. Um, because either the ministry does it or if they have decided not to, uh, we don't want to jump at the opportunity to, um, use rates instead of taxes for this. It's, we've had pretty much of that in a lot of areas where we.
Councillor Calvert.
I understand that the change that's been made isn't a change in theoretical policy. In fact, the wording on the website is much the same as it always was. What they've done, however, recently, well, I think recently, is changed the, um, breadth of response to an inquiry. So if you turn up in front of the MSD saying, you know, I really can't manage, I've got five children or whatever, um, they won't respond to you by saying, what can I do to help? When looking at the range of services they have, they will only respond by looking at a very specific answer. So it's like playing a game of twenty questions and you have to know the next nineteen before you get to the stage where they say, oh, that's the benefit you were asking about. You've asked me in exactly the right way, now I'll explain it to you. So I'm with the people who are saying this is a central government responsibility. And yes, they have changed, or either wording hasn't changed, the carrying out of it is pretty average and they should be held to account for it directly and nationally.
Present speakers, councillor Thompson.
Um, I, I voted against this last, last year when it was brought to us. Um, but I'm inclined to support this. I, I, I'm nervous about it because I think that, um, and I, it may be the councillor, um, McTavish, because I was late, um, moved it in the context of pilot, I'm not sure.
Didn't, but I'd be happy to entertain that, should it be required to.
Because I think that, um, if, if you do this or if we do this, then, um, it, it's going to require the same funding every year. And, um, I would have some discomfort around committing our services to something over the long term. But it, it, it does concern me that, um, I'm amused, to be honest, at, um, uh, the view that, um, this is a central government responsibility and because they're not doing it, we shouldn't, um, because that will somehow make them do it. Um, the, 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 the only way it will make them do it is if, um, is if people are sufficiently shamed into doing it. Um, I, I would like to find some way to kickstart this. I would also like the Methodist mission to talk to other social service agencies. I don't see, um, I, I, I don't see why this should be simply their prerogative to do. And it may be that if they're unable to fund it as a social service agency, that if they were to do it as a multi-agency, um, approach, then it may well be able to get off the ground at relatively small sums of money. So I'd be prepared to support fifteen thousand dollars this year only as a way of kickstarting a pilot in the hope that social service agencies would, um, would, would see it through into the future. Um, and that would be, um, I would be very reluctant to go past that.
Right, the, um, motion is on the wall or the screen.
Just, I've just got to check, I, I have amended it to refer to a one-year pilot, so.
Do you have any with that, so you're going to have with that?
We can have the battle again next year.
Councillor Wilson.
Um, I, I, I too voted against this last time it came to us. Um, and I have really difficult views on it, but I wonder, having heard the submissions about the poll and how few students, including my children, I think, who may be entitled to community services cards, um, I'd certainly like them to be talking to the O U S A as well as other services, uh, other sources being, as in the, um, that I think was, were being referred to by councillor Thompson. Um, this comes with some concern also though, that if they're really successful, A, they should do themselves out of a job, so it only should be for one year, but also that our services that we do give out, say, community services cards for, are going to be somewhat, um, come with other costs. Um, so this fifteen thousand may actually come at a much bigger cost to the city in the form of people getting entitlements that they weren't going to use before. Um, and so it's a, with some trepidation, trepidation that I go down this line, um, yeah, and, and, and a nervous of supporting it. I do like the idea of councillor Thompson though, that it shouldn't be, um, just Methodist mission. And I also am concerned about the wording of the motion, that it is, um, I'd want, that, that this whole project will be forty thousand dollars worth. I'm happy to put fifteen thousand dollars in and see if they can run with that, without requiring thirty-five, the balance of the twenty-five thousand, because I think that they could make a huge difference with just the O U S A without getting another twenty-five thousand actually and, and prove it at that level. So I'm, I'm, I'm worried about the wording, about that, but that's, yeah.
If you'll get to, on the other speakers.
Could, could I ask the mover if she'd be prepared to change one other word?
Yep.
Um, I'm not happy or not comfortable with the word advocacy in there. Uh, advice would suit me just fine. Advocacy has implied something different to me.
Does that suit them?
That's, I'm happy with that.
Speaking of, yeah, yeah. Right, uh, the being number speakers, um, councillor McTavish, you're over the time.
Well, thank you, your worship, the, um, first of all, in, in addressing the issue raised by councillor Wilson in relation to, um, balance, um, I, I think if the mission could come along and show that that was in kind and, and fulfil the requirements and, and the balance of the project as outlined in the documentation in front of us, um, I, I think that would be fine. What, what I think, the reason why it's important to reference the balance in this motion is because, um, the applicant may well simply scale back the, the project and, um, and use, um, the thirty-five or forty-five thousand dollars that they've already obtained from other funders plus our fifteen thousand dollars to do, um, yeah, forty-five thousand from other funders plus our fifteen thousand to, um, fulfil the, yeah, part of what is pitched in front of us. And I don't think that that's what we would endorse, or that's not what I'm comfortable endorsing. Um, in relation to the issues raised by David Benson Pope, um, I'm moving this on the basis of the understanding that M S D no longer provides this service. And, um, that was what the submitter explicitly said, um, in her, and I think she said it two years running, um, in her presentation to us. Um, I, my understanding is that is the case. Perhaps this needs to be subject to confirmation that M S D does not provide that service. Um, and I'm, I'm, um, I'm seconded as comfortable with that and, um, I would amend it along those lines.
Um, I think, can I just make a call that it is found to be difficult to verify this because if we go to M S D and say, do you tell people what benefits they, that can have? They will say, of course we do, so. How do you verify something that they don't want put in writing as councillor Calvert has already said? I, I, I'm, I think that's a, that would just be making, uh, it could, it could, because you couldn't satisfy the condition.
I think also, um, I presume it's intended to be advice for people. I mean, it says benefit advice, but.
Right, councillor McTavish.
Is it, oh, sorry.
Except, in this, the, the, the intention of this motion is to fund the application outlined in our cases, which was an advice service for benefi, for beneficiaries to ensure that they are, um, advised of and, um, able to access their full entitlement.
That's it? Um, while we're just about to vote on this.
I just want to clarify that the application does not state that this organisation has received any funding for this particular service. So just to note that. So there's, there's discussion that, that, that permission received, have already got funded for this, they have not. Um, that's not, that's not what this application says. This application says that they receive funding from those organisations, not specifically for this. So I just need, just wanted that.
Thank you, sorry.
But I think the, the motion cuts that. Okay, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
That's carried. Right, let's start top.
Mr. Chair. I have consulted the decision sheet and I'm happy that the responses to cricket, attago and the Dunedin prison charter are fairly satisfactory and accurate. So I really just wanted to make sure we dealt with the submissions. So unless anyone else wants to raise those, um, you can cross them off.
Okay, all ready. Um, now, the next one, uh, development of policy requiring use of bales on bikes for shared walkways, cycleways. Um, well, are you happy that this be referred to the bar, uh, community?
Someone, someone. I'm quite happy, I don't want us to, I don't want to wrong things by us debating now, but, um, this is an issue that is often present in the media, both here. um, this is an issue that is often present in the media, both here and in central Tago, where there is conflict between the various users of these paths, tracks, whatever, routes. And I think some solution, other than a klaxon or such like, as has been suggested by one of my colleagues, um, would be sensible to consider. D C C sponsored bells with advertising logos on them would be great.
As I mentioned, as I mentioned before we started, I'm pretty sure there was, um, a program a few years ago by the D C C to provide free bells for bicycles, uh, and I was the recipient, a couple of them myself, so we'll send it to the Infrastructure Services Standing Committee.
Thank you.
Now, um, there's one more here, um, the oral submission from Ms Butler, you, you raised this...
Yeah, I raised it.
You've got to clarify, I know the chief has looked into the, the concerns you raised...
Well, I raised it at, at the time, Mister Chairman, and, um, and my concerns were compounded by the subsequent email traffic, um, which added a few more names. Uh, it's my view that, uh, I'm not making any judgment of any kind about accuracy or none of the statements that we made, but I, I have concerns about our procedures for receiving submissions or refusing them, which have clarified to me what our legal responsibilities are. But, um, I believe we have another responsibility in terms of natural justice to make sure the people who were referenced in those submissions, accusations, whatever they were, uh, are informed that they were made, and that's the end of it as far as we're concerned, but they must have an opportunity to respond, that's all, if they wish to. And they may not, but I think we should make sure they know what was said.
Um, I was asked to, um, have a look at whether, uh, the council had a power, if it was concerned about submission, not necessarily just in relation to this one, but in general, excuse me, to not accept a submission. The advice is that, uh, council should accept submissions, but if it wished to, if it felt that things were potentially defibratory, uh, or, um, liableless, that submissions be redacted before they're placed in the public domain. So that's not necessarily specifically about, um, Ms Butler's submission, but in general. Uh, as to whether or not you would like the submission that has been made to be forwarded to those who are named in the submission, um, I think that is, um, perfectly over to you. It's, the submission is now in the public domain, I understand, is that right, Ms Butler?
It should be, although I'm unclear what was reported and what was on, so, but just sort of, meeting point?
Well, yes, and the meeting was recorded, so in fact the oral submission is also in the public domain because of that, and anybody is welcome to forward the submission to whomever they choose.
That, um, too, uh, the recording aside, there were parts of the written submission, there were nintellies that were not written, which contained a lot of the material I'm referring to, and then, and all of it probably, what a strange thing. And, uh, subsequently, there was email traffic which expanded the ambit considerably. So I'm happy, I, just to resolve this, I don't think we need to debate it, if people want to, um, I'm happy to move that, um, the material submitted by Ms Butler, both in writing and verbally and in email, uh, be forwarded to the parties concerned, the parties named, for their response, should they choose.
To a second, Sister, Sister, Councilor Hawkins, um, okay, let's go. Councilor Bensley.
If you're going to do this, and given that the submission wasn't in the frivolous or vexatious category, therefore be rejected, why stop at Ms Butler? Why about Ms Nicolau? Are we going to send copies of her submission to the mayor as well? Um...
You've already got one, I'm not, I'm not going to clear it.
Um, the, yeah, um, I, I'm, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see, uh, any particular issue with any submitter coming here and saying anything as contentious as they like. Um, I don't think it's our job to then forward anything that anyone says around here onto the relevant, uh, people that may have been named or implied. If it's in the public domain, and all of it has been in the public domain, it's the job of those people that might feel themselves to be somehow constrained, liable to whatever else, uh, to act. It's not our job to try and prompt them into doing something about it. Um, so for that reason, I don't think that this is an area that we need to get into. If we are going to get into it, we need to have some rules around it and not just single out Ms Butler, any number of people making all sorts of claims around this table, I'd be one of them, um, that you might want to start forwarding particular bits of information to.
We do.
Oh, it's already done, you haven't told me, okay, cheers, mate. Um, yeah, so for that reason, I'll be voting against this motion.
Thank you. Councilor Kelvert.
I think adding in, um, email traffic, um, opens a whole new can of worms, worms as a matter of principle, unless every time somebody sends us an email that has a name in it, we're expected to, and that could be saying something that all negative, we're expected to forward that to whoever it is for comment, and presumably the consequent production to the, um, media of what is likely to be quite interesting, and therefore we're circulating what might be an inappropriate thing for somebody to be said in this, in these circumstances anyway. So we become part of the problem by putting that out in the media, I think, if we're getting named names and then...
Uh, views, it really is a matter between the submitter and whoever they're referencing. Um, it's not our, it's not our policy, it's not our comment, um, and, uh, I don't, I, I'm just not quite sure where you draw the line. And whilst I acknowledge Ms Butler made, um, some fairly strong comments, I don't think she'd actually been the slightest bit concerned about your forwarding of mine. So I'm not really sure that we actually need to, to do this, and it's not something she hasn't said on many occasions before and in many different forums, so I, I just think that we leave it alone.
Councilor...
Yeah, look, actually, I agree, I, I, if I was in favour of forwarding this stuff on, I would actually include the emails, because she clearly said in them, hey Benson Pope, this is what you said, here's another ten names or twelve names, but I just don't think it's in the spirit of, uh, where we're at as a council. It's not our role to forward that stuff on, and therefore I say leave the whole line under the dead dog life, um, and that's, I've got no interest whether the claims are true or not true, or I'm completely ambivalent on it.
Further discussion? Um, I'll, I'll just, um, I am not in favour of, um, passing these, uh, the names on, but caveat that the email that was subsequently sent was definitely sent as an addition to the submission, so, because I'm not separating out, there are emails and emails, and that one was sent as an addition, and we've had some others that were additional to submissions as well. However, I, um, like Councilor Thompson, are a little uncomfortable, um, in the absence of some kind of policy framework in, in just saying, oh, this one we will send on to these people and this one we won't. So I don't know that would do a great deal of harm, that I am not comfortable about doing things in a way that isn't disciplined by a policy framework, especially when, um, people's reputations are presumably being questioned, so. Councilor Bensley, second of all.
Thank you. Well, there is a policy framework, actually, um, colleagues, and it's called natural justice. Um, and this process that I'm suggesting is exactly the parliamentary process, where people are named and accusations are thrown around. Um, as, as we're in this case, uh, the protection for all parties involved is to make sure that people who are named have the opportunity to respond, are aware, are made aware of what's said, and have the opportunity to respond. I'm quite surprised by what's been said. This is the United City Council, not the blogosphere, and I believe we have a professional responsibility to follow appropriate processes of natural justice. I don't care, actually, whether the people named want to respond or not, but they should have, I believe they have the right to. And what's more, I believe they have the right to know what was said, because a lot of what was said isn't in the public domain. And of course, as to email, well, it's on the D C C system, as to elected members, it's discoverable. So it is in the public domain, uh, and parties have been maligned, possibly, and they don't know about it. And I don't consider that satisfactory, and I think if we, if people don't support this on the basis of not having a policy, then we'd better develop a policy, because non-support for this, to me, runs completely against the principles of natural justice.
I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Version, please.
See the votes.
I just think Theresa Joseph's certainly in the room, you...
Counselor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Counselor Kelvert? No. Counselor Paul?
No.
Counselor Hawkins?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
No.
Counselor McTavish?
Aye.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counselor Pete?
Aye.
Counselor Stane?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Andrews?
No.
Counselor Wiley?
No.
Counselor Wilson?
No.
Mayor Calvert?
No.
Motion lost, he's four.
Now, the last item on this list is, um, Counselor Stane, she plays the...
Um, I wasn't able to be here this morning, and I'm not quite sure what the process is that's being followed, but there were a couple on this list that, just chatting to Counselor Stane, I don't think have been looked at. One was the, uh, basketball at Tago one, um, and the other was the Southern Symphony, and I did want to make some comments about that.
So the process that we followed was, people basically knew that some of us, that chumling going, you're saying that, just, we're just doing...
Could I, so notice that I would want to...
So what, let's take one at a time, so the ones of basketball?
I, I, I would like to move that basketball at Tago be, um, allocated fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, and inform that there will be no money forthcoming in the next financial year.
Okay, is there a second today? Councilor Hall? Okay, move, Congress, we can't, second Lord, would you like to speak for the council?
Well, I, I would, I, I think that this is an organisation that has, um, that, that was going out the back door only a few years ago. They have had a reasonable amount of assistance from us, and they have put, put in place a very professional organisation that has turned the whole thing around. And I, I asked them questions when they were here around how they extricated themselves from this and, and, um, from this ongoing funding. And it, it struck me that they are very aware of the fact that they need to do that and that they've made considerable progress in that direction. Uh, I, I don't think it would be encouraging them to extricate themselves by giving them the thirty thousand dollars that they've asked for. I do think we need to indicate to them that they can't just keep coming back to us, but I think it's appropriate, if an organisation has been professional, has done the work, has put an organisation in place to, um, get rid of the problems that plagued it, and is, a, a, and is doing not, not just at the top level, but a hell of a lot at the lower levels, um, then I think we should facilitate that by a transition process out of funding. And for me, the fifteen thousand would enable that.
Ladies and speakers, Councilor Hawkins.
Oh, I just have a question about whether we can or can't make decisions here about future financial years.
Um, well, we can make it a one-off payment. Um, the context for that, Counselor, is that up till a couple of years ago, we sometimes made allocations for three, three years, and in the absence of a grant, what is it, a rental, something?
Grant review.
Yeah, the grant review, we just...
Isn't, isn't, sorry.
Wait, all right, let's go.
Isn't that not how to say that? I mean, that, that's not what that says. That doesn't say we'll turn down two years or three, that says we will not do it next year, and we are then binding the council for next year, so could it change it?
Well, it is a hundred and fifty, about...
And an indication, and that if it wants, that we're unlikely to, or something like that.
Well, I'd be happy to say unlikely, but I, I, I was really wanting to send a very clear message that this was a transition payment. Um, and I think that if we remove any ref, if we, if we don't give them that understanding, then it's rather Mrs Porter's point is...
It's a transition to the...
Final transition payment might actually be the words we're looking for.
All right, I'd be happy with that.
Yes, that's...
That, that they'd be allocated a final transition, uh, final transition payment of fifteen thousand as a one-off payment.
Yeah, because I think Counselor Kelvert's point is correct, that we can't mind the decision-making of the next annual payment.
Well, we're the ones who are here now, surely.
Kate's just signified, she may be...
Uh, further speaker, now, Counselor Kelvert, do you want to say... Okay, further speakers to this, Counselor Bensley.
Um, I, I agree entirely with, uh, the sentiments of Counselor Thompson, and if we can have a final transition payment in there, I believe that that gives us the, gives the clear signal that, uh, that Counselor Thompson wants to, but because it relates only to the transition payment, then it doesn't actually bind, uh, going forward, which would also keep Counselor Kelvert happy.
Right, are there any further speakers? Okay, Counselor Thompson, you want to give a number of, you know? I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Harry. Um, now, um, Symphony, well...
I was going to do something much similar, actually. Okay. Well, the, that, um, uh, that we, um, we approve an additional, an additional payment in the current financial year of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second? Second, Counselor Hall? Did you, did you mean to say it?
Yeah, I, I did, then I thought, oh, it's only fifteen K.
So, just to have a... What is it, what is it, has we...
Don't give it around. No one else, no outside.
You are singing it, for the sake of discussion.
Well, all I can say is that had I been here this morning, I wouldn't have voted to give the money to the youth orchestra, um, uh, but, um, I, I just, I, I think that this is, um, i- this is a, an organisation that is, I think, working right on the extremes of survival in terms of financial, um, but, and I think it delivers a, a lot for the city, um, that would, would not be there if it's, um, if, if it were unable to continue. And I'm also, um, aware of the fact that around the changes of funding, it may make a difference to what they get, um, nationally. So I'm, I'm prepared to meet them partway in their request for additional funding, but I just don't think we can afford to go the whole way.
Okay, further speakers, Counselor Kelvert.
Um, this is my opportunity to speak, but it is a question. Can we have the running total?
Can we have two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars in my running total, not allocated?
Does that, does that align with what yours? Better or worse?
Some of them stick from the past.
A hundred and eighty-one.
Aye, yeah, I haven't counted that. I'm assuming that whatever's left here goes to definitely...
So, hang on, so you're saying a hundred and sixty-six included the hundred and seventy-nine?
No, 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 sorry, I was saying to you either the fifteen K or the five, the angle to a hundred and sixty-six.
And, yeah, that's, that's...
Jane, Jane, can you, can you take the total of the six hundred and whatever it was, so the four fifty-five plus the forty plus the one seventy-nine, subtract everything that's spent and tell us what's left, please?
We were six, six, four, two hundred and...
Um, we didn't take the twenty-three K savings and the...
So can you read it and please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing was the, the fact that it was...
Um, and the other thing was the, the fact that the ZA don't have a Saint Peter's Day will be approved another year for that. So that was, so that was another bit. So you may have been there until the...
So...
So what's the total for debt repayment?
So leaving the hundred and seventy-nine in there, you've got the hundred and sixty-six still to allocate that you could add.
After the symphony, potentially.
Uh, yes, that would be after the symphony.
It's a hundred and sixty-six plus a hundred and seventy-nine?
So there is, there is currently available. Yes, can you add those together, please? Three hundred and forty-five, is that right? Left for debt repayment.
So councillor Calvert, is there anyone who can give it now? Councillor, that was just a question. Councillor Vandervis, question, order please.
Yeah, just, just briefly, is there anyone here that can actually give us an idea? It's been suggested that if we fund the symphony so much, it'll help them get other, uh, talents and funding somewhere. Is there anyone that can shed any, shed any light on that? If that's the case, it might tip in that direction.
I had the Arts supervisor here this morning, but we didn't quite get to the Arts grants dealing. She did note on this that the review, so the, the submission from symphony mentions the review and the, um, staff, staff agreed that the review allegations, allocations as discussed in the submission are correct. So there is an expectation now that symphony will attract a certain quantum of local funding and so, um, additional support would help them in their bid for CNZ funding.
Okay, okay, so, so this additional funding, you believe, will help get some additional funding from our centre of government? Okay.
All right, are there two of the speakers? councillor Lord.
Again, sorry, just a question for the move there. Is it your intention then for, not that we can expressly say that obviously in this motion, but for the years beyond, for it to go back to something approximating the eighty-eight, three hundred that was already in the budget for the symphony and the years going?
Um, well, I, I thought we were only in a position to do a one-year. So that's, that's based on what I was told in the previous motion. Okay, thanks. So, that's my understanding.
Any further speakers? councillor Thompson, do you want to, do you want to speak again? Right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Now councillor, um, Staines, you wanted to raise the issue of the Regent Theatre.
I can, um, I can speak to that, I think. So, so we have been working on a service level agreement with the Regent Theatre. I'll just make sure I'm not contradicting. Um, so the staff, both the property department and community development, have been working with the Regent Theatre on the development of a new service level agreement. With the changes to the property department's, um, structure, that has delayed that work a little. So we had hoped to present it during these meetings, but we're not in a position to do so. We believe that the, um, once that comes to council, the, the, we put thirty thousand dollars in the budget in January, which you endorsed in January, and just need to confirm that at this stage. The additional thirteen that they're requesting, we believe will be part of, um, you don't need additional budget to cover that, that that will be part of the service level agreement that comes forth, um, with the support that's currently, um, given by the property department. Just makes it more transparent once the service level agreement comes forth.
All right. And that gets us to the end of the list of requests and all the submissions. So it remains, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we need to pass a resolution deciding what, whether to strike the rate below three percent and, um, not rate for the, I don't know, this three hundred and something.
How much is it that's left in total that could be used to apply to debt, please? A single total figure?
Right, so there is, if we, if we strike the rate at a three percent increase, there will be three hundred and forty-five thousand that we can either apply to debt repayment, which is consistent with our policy, if we go to three percent, or we can decide not to rate for it, in which case our rates increase would be...
Would be eight or something like that.
Okay, so I'm seeking, uh, councillor, so make a decision on that? I'm seeking a summary of the moves I made, councillor.
I would like to ask a question if I can.
Sure.
And that is, um, um, Dr. Billarott, you have allocated in your budget, uh, fifty thousand dollars for invest-to-save initiatives. Um, you've indicated that you may use some of that to progress rapidly through a bit of a triage around some projects. Um, is it possible that there may be some projects in this financial year which would require, that could be progressed in this financial year, should the capital be available?
This current financial year?
But not the current financial year, sorry, the, the fourteen, fifteen year.
Possibly, at this point, I'm not, I don't know. So I know there's some that are being looked at, there's one that's just been knocked back, it's having too long a repayment period. So I suspect there could be, but at this point in time, not that I'd be in a position where I'm going to allocate money to without coming back here.
Without coming back here. If, um, if you did get to the point where you wished to progress something and, and you came back to us, um, if we had not rated specifically for a budget, would we be in a position to fund it in the fourteen, fifteen year?
By raising debt.
And you'd be comfortable with that approach?
Um...
I think where I'm going is, is today...
If you use it to retire debt, um, look, if you use this three hundred and forty-five to retire debt and then you raise some of that back, you're still on a, you're still on a winning ride. If you reduce rates and don't retire this, don't apply this to debt, then you'd be raising a little additional debt, but, and you'd have slightly lower rates.
And can I clarify, picking up on that, you, if it's an invest-to-save project, you wouldn't be doing it unless you were making more than the debt was costing you?
Yes, we tend to be looking at about a four to five year payback period.
Councillor, captain.
This is a question too, what does three hundred and forty-five thousand look like in rates? Zero point... Cameron, shall we have a task? Yeah, zero point two five approximately.
Zero point two eight.
I'd like to move a motion to use it to reduce rates, second.
Okay, so the motion on, the motion on the table is that we use the so-called surplus up to three percent to reduce the rate increase and it would be two quid, three quid, it would be two quid seven two rate increase. Oh, so you, you're not taking it? So there's a second, second...
No, I won't give that much of a date, it'll only be two point nine something.
No, no, about, about two point seven, did, did you calculate that? Two point seven two.
Two point seven two, okay. All right, let's be clear about the motion on the table. Hang on, we've got a motion, it's move councillor Calvert, second, councillor Vandervis, that the money be allocated to, be not, not raised. In other words, the rate increase would be two point seven two percent and not three percent. That's the motion, councillor Calvert, would you like to speak to it as the move? Yes, councillor Vandervis.
The rates increased wouldn't be two point seven two as opposed to three, it would be two point seven two on last year's rates or this current year's rates. And that would, in my view, send a powerful message to the people that we are trying to keep rates down to Dunedin, ratepayers down to getting closer to the amount more they get per year, to keep it within the increased benefits and other things people are getting because if people's income is going up less than the rates increase, then we take more and more money from Agnes and South Dunedin and the rest of them. So it would be a powerful message that we are dedicated to keeping the rates down in Dunedin.
Councillor, um, please invite...
Um, I'm interested in the motion, Mr. Chelan, in the context of the advice we've just had, maybe prior to that from the chief executive, that the more intelligent strategic, strategic option, as I heard it, and she can correct me if I was interpreting, was to rate that the predicted three percent and retire debt. And it seems to me to do that is the only sensible way to proceed. I think there's better outcome for the city and the ratepayers that we all want to serve. Uh, with every little bit of extra debt, we can retire from the debt that we have in this organisation. And, and what's more, if, if that is not the advice she just gave us, then she will tell us immediately. What's more, I think that to achieve a, um, a rating level of three percent, given the pressures, has been a very productive and positive exercise, it's taken a few days, especially given the number of submissions. And it may well be that, um, the outcome of the discussion about the rotor priorities, for example, has further implications yet to be, yet to be revealed. I think it would be foolish, given that wider context, not to stick with the three percent, given that the target has been met, so I certainly won't be reporting, supporting this motion.
Councillor.
Can we hear from the chief executive as to whether she did say what she's attributed to say?
Whilst I'm delighted to have my advice referred to as intelligent, I possibly would have to say that might be stretching. Um, what I said was, if you've already rated for this money and you've used it to apply debt, then you can borrow it back down for capital improvement processes without increasing your debt level and you might decide that that's an intelligent course of action, otherwise.
Councillor, stop.
I can't support this resolution. Um, we made a long-term promise of three percent. Um, we also have promised our ratepayers, some of us around this table did, to take a responsible position and sort out our finances, councillor Calvert. Um, and I think it would be sending the wrong signal not to focus our energy on, on retiring that debt. We've put a cap in, with the basis of that cap, any spare money in that cap would be used to retire debt. Uh, our chief executive and the executive team and our staff have worked hard to reduce the operational costs of council and we as council have made hard decisions not to spend money that would have been easy to spend. The outcome is, we've been able to get below the cap and be in a position to retire some debt. Um, it would be interesting to hear from the chief executive just what benefit has flowed to the ratepayer from the decisions we've made in the past to rate for the, for the indicated amount that we had indicated as our cap in terms of what that has reduced the costs of rates now by. So every time we paid our debt, we were to, we reduced the cost of the city's operating. And, and I think that will, that, that number probably looks pretty big right now.
Um, the work, that was begun at the beginning of the last council triennium to start to pull the, uh, the increases in, in levels of service. If that work hadn't happened the last, this would be the third year, the rates today would be seventeen percent higher than they are now.
Um, councillor Banks.
Councillor Staines has said that we made a long-term promise of three percent. I don't believe it was a promise in the first place and I was there. I believe it was a target, uh, which happily we seem to have just seemed to slip under. I believe it was also a target that was made in recognition of our rates increases historically having always been more than inflation and in the past, a hell of a lot more than inflation. So it wasn't a, a long-term promise of three percent. And it wasn't even three percent, it was to not exceed three percent. If we go for the three percent, and I don't think it makes a terrible amount of difference, but if we go for the three percent in terms of the message it gives to the public is that basically we decided a long time ago that we were going to raise the rates three percent, that we've made it our business to sort of pretty much get there. I think that, uh, in support of councillor Calvert's motion, that it sends a much more sensitive, uh, message to the public who are aware that the rate of inflation has been less than three percent and for many years now. And that if we come back with a rate that is actually less than three percent, to me, that makes a much better headline in tomorrow's ODT and gives people a much happier feeling about, are we actually keeping in line with things? Than if the long-term planned three percent simply rolls out as predicted. Um, I'm very happy for us to, um, rate at three percent and then use the balance and pay off a little debt, that's all fine and dandy. Uh, but as I said, I think in terms of how we present ourselves, even in terms perhaps of how we think about things, coming in at under three percent is a recognition of what our citizens are having to deal with in terms of inflation. It's a recognition that we are working to recognise their increasing costs. And for that reason, um, I support councillor Calvert's, uh, motion.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I think it would be superficially attractive to support this motion and, um, there would be some people out there who would, um, be supportive of that. Um, very roughly, um, if we support this motion, we'll reduce the average rate payer's rate bill by about ten cents a week. Um, and I accept that, except, apart from farmers, um, I accept, I accept that for, um, that for some people, every cent's actually important. But if we continue to adopt a policy, which I believe we need to adopt, which is reducing debt as fast as we can, we will reduce rate bills far more significantly than that in the future years. And that to me is the much more important thing to do. Um, I think that a good example of that, um, is the two million dollars extra funding that we have, that we have over a couple of years. We made the decision two years in a row, as I recall, um, to increase debt repayment on the, the stadium and the significant impact in terms of years and years and years that it took off the debt repayment schedule. Now, again, right now, for somebody who's paying it, that means that they could pay but less if we took forty years still to pay it off. Um, so, but my, my view is that we, we took a decision that wherever possible, we were going to reduce debt and I think we should stick with that. And I don't think that the political kudos, um, will be, um, is the political kudos of reducing rates from three percent to two point eight, that kind of level of reduction and the actual rate bill warrants, in my view, um, abandoning getting that debt down as fast as possible.
Councillor, make it.
Thank you, Bishop, I, I, um, the points that both councillor Thompson and councillor Staines make are ones that I've wa, wanted to make. I, it may not have been a promise that we, um, committed ourselves to, but certainly it's, it's called a financial strategy. And, um, I think we would be remiss not to stick to that strategy as agreed to in the long-term planning process with the community three years ago. Um, I think that's probably about as close to what it comes as to a promise, um, as, as you'll get in relation to council process. Um, our debt levels are seriously constraining our ability to invest in projects that I know all of us around this table would dearly love to be investing in. Um, two or three days ago, we had to make the decision not to, um, bring forward the South Dunedin library work, um, in part because, um, we simply did not, or do not, um, have any room in our budget to be paying for those things, um, outside of the timeframes in which we've articulated in that LTP. Um, similarly, we've heard from our Moskew community that they would dearly love an aquatic facility and I had to speak very strongly to that motion and say, we do not have capital headroom and people need to understand that. Um, every little bit that we can use now to reduce that, that rates increase will, as has been said by previous speakers, um, pave serious dividends in terms of, um... in terms of, um, reducing the costs that this council faces going forward. Councillor Thompson referred to the two million dollars that we've put year on year into, um, additional stadium debt repayment. My recollection is that that just about halved the interest bill that this, that this city is collectively going to have to pay on that facility over the period of the debt. So it's not insubstantial that the amounts that, that we gain from, um, taking a hit now in order to, um, to ensure that, um, that, that is, that impact is reduced later. And, um, I think that debt does, it, it, it reflects risk and it is risk if not well managed. And our long-term debt management strategy is to significantly reduce debt. And my view is that we really need to be prioritising that work. So I won't be supporting this motion.
Councillor.
To start with this process, I thought there was no way we were ever going to get to three percent. So first off, I would applaud staff and councillor, fellow councillors for actually getting there. Um, I think that to me is the first and key aspect, we go back to every resident in Dunedin and say, we actually went through this annual plan for five toothed co and really looked at how we could best balance the finances. The average rate in Dunedin is nineteen, nineteen hundred and forty-seven dollars. Three percent would equal fifty-eight dollars, forty-one cents. Two point seven, two percent would equal fifty-two dollars, ninety-six. So that's the difference is really, so it's the difference of five dollars, forty-five, as councillor Thompson said, ten cents a week. I think we should stick with the three percent because if you go to two point seven two this year, then what's stopping us going from, to three point four percent next year? If we stick on the three percent benchmark and work on that, I think that is probably the easiest way politically for everyone, but also to really show the residents that we are working towards how we can get the best bang for their budget.
Councillor.
I think I could be swayed either way, but, um, I don't think we should pick each other up over it because, you know, we, we need to acknowledge that there has been a job well done. But just picking up on the discussion about debt, I think it's worth reminding ourselves that this is the first year that we are paying back more debt or taking on new debt. And that trend continues, uh, you know, throughout the, the ten-year plan. So at the end of the day, um, this is a relatively modest amount in terms of whether we pass this motion, um, and stabilize pay up or that we edit to debt repayment. So as I said, I could probably be swayed either way, but after councillor Riley spoke, then I'd practically go that way.
Councillor.
Um, we had a number of submissions, I'd just like to note, supporting the strategy, financial strategy in here. Um, and I find it peculiar that we're now considering something that I don't think actually had that many submissions asking us to reduce the rates rise. Albeit, I appreciate there was a lot of people who, um, were concerned about rates increases generally. Um, the C P I relevance is something that, I just, I just don't understand why we compare rates with C P Is. It's, it's, I appreciate other people's benefits go up via C P I, but it has no relevance in local government. Local government costs are driven by very different things. And equally, the C P I reflects, um, the price of vegetables if they went down, would we be adjusting other stuff? I, I think we have to see them as quite different and I don't, I, it's really, really bad to try and compare apples with oranges in those cases because they're not, it's just not a relevant measure. The one thing that if we were looking at going ahead is the risk of our debt levels going, not, not our debt levels going up, but our cost of debt going up. And that seems to be the trend, it, it is going up. Um, and so the best and most prudent means to deal with that risk is to reduce our debt so that we can manage it better. Um, so, and the other part I'd like to say is that a three percent increase now, or if you did this, a two point seven, two percent increase and tried to impose a three percent increase next year, you actually lose more money. Um, so a three percent increase on, on this increase is less next year than a three percent increase. And if we want to keep this pro- policy going long-term, it's easier to save debt now and give that very clear message to ratepayers ongoing, that it is three percent and we're prepared to keep within that. So, um, as much as I would love to be reducing the amount we take from ratepayers, um, I think that the biggest risk at the moment is interest cost on debt skyrocketing. And we have to, if we can, address that. And that is, the only way we can do that is by reducing debt.
Further speakers? Can I just say that this is a choice between two very good outcomes? Because, and I pick up on what councillor Wiley said, I think staff and this council have achieved a tremendous amount in these deliberations in sticking to the limit or within the limit, and councillor Van Devis is actually right, he said that that's a limit. Um, in sticking below that, uh, and I, and I'm very, I'm actually very proud of the fact that we achieved that. I'm very proud of what staff have achieved. Um, one of the things that we understood when we set the limit of three percent ongoing was that one of the really important things in setting rate rises, in seeing rates, is consistency. And inconsistency actually has sometimes slightly perverse outcomes. And I think this is what councillor Wilson was talking about. Making, ke- keeping, uh, three percent this year makes keeping rate increases in the future down easier. The lower you make it this year, the harder it is to keep it lower because you're working from a lower base. And as I think one or two other speakers have said, reducing debt any time reduces the costs going forward all the time. So every subsequent year, you save some more. So making a choice between these two very attractive options, one to reduce debt and one to reduce the rate rise, I think in the long, for the benefit of the long-term of the community, I would, um, for reducing the debt. So I can't support this motion. Councillor Calvert, do I reply?
I agree with all the people who say we're in a very fortunate position that we're making this decision now. I wouldn't be heading that way rather than heading down the debt reduction, um, route unless I had remembered that the huge difference that we're going to have in the next while is the big amount that's coming out of the long-term plan. And we're talking eight million, ten, whatever it is, that we don't have to spend any longer on solid, what is it? Bio solids. That is going to make the hugest difference on our debt program in the next ten years. And that's why it will come down. And when we're making that amount of debt repayment or lack of taking on new debt or whatever you're going to call it, that's making a lot more difference than what we do with three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars now. That in itself is a huge thing that's happened and it's due to the staff doing all sorts of due diligence and that's fabulous and we lucked into it and for all sorts of reasons. But that is the thing that's going to make our debt better than it would have been in a major fashion. And because that's happening and it is making that sort of difference, I think we can give this money back to the ratepayers and reduce their burden. From their point of view, it's real money, doesn't matter to them whether, whether it's a local government index or anything, it's real money out of their pockets each and every week.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to put it, um, all those in favour of the motion, please say aye. Against? It's lost. Um, and I guess that I'm, I'm, most will move for the chair a subsequent motion that the surplus, three hundred and forty-five thousand be used to reduce debt.
It's just that the rates be set at three percent. The general rate be set at three percent.
With the consequence that the general rate be set at three percent.
No, it's the general rate should be set and then there's the surplus.
And are there true motions that you're, that you're proposing both those?
I'm, I'm proposing it as that the gen- yes, that the general rate be set at, at a three percent increase and that any surplus, and it's probably prudent not to specify as the numbers change, uh, be used to reduce debt. Councillor, do the motion, do you reply? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Yes? Carry it. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Now, um, councillors, I need to move, um, item twenty-two on the agenda, uh, which is, and I'll move it from the chair, that the amendments to the draft annual plan is resolved, this meeting be incorporated to the final annual plan production on the twenty-third of June, two thousand and fourteen. Second to councillor Staines, is there any final discussion on that? It's just basically a confirmation. I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Now, thank you. Now, I just want to conclude with, um, a, a few comments. I'd like mainly thank yous. I'd like to thank councillors for the consistent, determined effort that we're putting in. This has been a very long process, as much as anything because we had so many submissions. So I'd like to thank councillors for the determined and constructive effort that all of us around this table have put in. I'd like to thank the staff for the enormous effort, sometimes, um, having to go away and find more stuff for us, et cetera, that I think the staff have done an absolutely knockout job through this annual plan. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the submitters who, uh, for whatever reason, rose to the occasion and came in in their hordes. And, uh, it's the most important interaction between our community and this council each year is this process. And no matter how arduous it is, it is extraordinarily important. So I'd like to, um, thank those as well. Thank you all and we are now finished.
Thanks to, thanks to the chair for his perseverance and tolerance.